I plan that they'd like to go with you at a work session. So you are welcome to approach the board and they have boards and I will give you, I have some material for you to.
These are just individual sets of the easy survey.
And as a background, so this is a property that was long known as the Long Island Automobile Museum. I think it was built in the 40s or 50s. It's been overgrown, the site and the existing buildings are kind of coming dilapidated. What they'd like to do is build an office building in the front, 8,000 square feet. It does sound Conover 39 and Sandy Hollow Road. And in the back, they'd like to redo the museum building itself, which is the distinctive building on the property. And there's a number of storage buildings on the property that they would like to, a few would be demolished, I think two, and then three they repurpose to do storage for their business, which is further up on Sandy Hollow Road.
The front building is Norsek, that's the 8,000 square foot building?
It's an office, they're proposing it as an office building. They could have other business offices in there besides Norsek, but I'm not quite sure. Right now it says Norsek, isn't it?
Yes.
Just so you know, it is bisected. So HB is the front of the property, which is generally, if you take the property line that's to the east and extend it across, that is the boundary line of HB. And the north is, I believe, our four zoning districts. So it's still residential, so that museum use, we'd be a pre-existing use on the property, therefore they're at the ZBI.
My name is Randy Croxton. I'm the architect for the applicant for Norsek and this is 315 County Road 39. And in your packet that I handed out, the first image is this image right here, which is an overall plan of the entire site. And the key element that we're discussing here are the mitigating factors that relate to SEQA review. And what we've done is to advance the plan and make specific clarifications to give you a sense of what the overall concept is. And I have to say that in terms of sort of community and humanistic values, one of the first things that we wanted to do, and I can refer to the last image in your packet, or if you can see this example, is that in 1949, the Long Island Museum, Automotive Museum, was put on the site, very distinctive structure or series of structures. It was right after World War II in 1949. And there are a series of Quonset huts that were from World War II that were located on the site related to the Automotive Museum. And one very unusual combination of three of those elements was placed on the site. Skip Norsek is the head of Norsek and he and we collectively invested in having Robert Silman, who's a preeminent structural, preservation structural engineer, come out. Robert I've worked with for 30 years and he was the engineer, preservation engineer for Mount Vernon and Fallingwater and the Jefferson Memorial, so quite capable individual. And we wanted to preserve the exact structure, literally it turns out unfortunately, the framing is literally dissolved, so thin are the members. And so we are coming forward with a replication of that structure because Skip also has an interest in antique cars and has some of the cars from the beginning of their corporation in their work, so that we have a replication of that element that occurs on that same footprint and same location. And that is visible in the approach to the building and actually is visible from the highway. So it's a, an important part, we think, of history of the site. And then in terms of the other values of doing a project that's an exemplar, we're doing a platinum lead project. Right now, there are no platinum lead projects on the east end, but in terms of the quality of the architecture, but in terms of this setting, most importantly, in terms of water and water quality, those are the issues that are addressed in the development of the site plan. And so we'll share that with you. So basically, the components are the new building, which is located here. It's about 5,500 square feet of new construction. There is a cellar, which is below, which doesn't count in that overall FAR. There's the facade of the original museum. On the same footprint will be a volume of new construction, which is a storage building. And then the parking, we are actually land banking 12 of the, of the parking spots that are required because this is really not a high-traffic operation. Very confident that we would be a low-impact user, basically those related to the operation. It's not a commercial public interface corporation in this instance. And so you'll see that we have, in the highway business area, we have 27 actual parking spaces and we have 12 additional land banked. And so there's a very strong landscape plan involving built-in consistency with sustainable sites initiative. We have porous concrete throughout so that water can move through the site. And we have a low meadow landscape designed by Hollander, which is again, an indigenous setting that's been developed, rain gardens for, to keep the erosion and water moving off the site in a positive way. And then there was one building that was of concern that was raised earlier, and that was Building C. There are four existing additional buildings. One here, which is Building C, these three buildings here. So these, it's existing, right now, it's existing non-conforming. And so the one that was the closest and the request came back, could we screen it? And so ultimately, we decided that we would eliminate it so that the non-conformance has been reduced. So this building comes out here. Also, we're utilizing a pre-existing connection to Sandy Hollow. And we're providing to the adjoining use, this is monuments, if you've, if you're right, we're right across from PC Richards, so if you're familiar with that corner, very active corner. This is the monument business here. And so they are granted a cross-access easement, so we don't create another curb cut. So we're working within existing framework here and have a very straightforward situation. So I'm going to take the overall plan down and you can see in the second image in your booklet, a more detailed blow-up of the area that is actually highway business. And then a series of vignettes of the sustainable environmental features on the site. The, when I turn to the approach, that is to say, as you enter the site here, we're showing a very large specimen tree indigenous that's part of that sort of signature at the entrance. You can see the facade of the building. And I might comment that the building facing south does have glass in that facade. It has spandrels, which reduce the amount of the glass. And then it has a freestanding brise-lé, which stands in front of the building and shades that glass, so that the other three sides are all solid walls with punched openings. So the energy performance is, will be quite extraordinary. And then we have daylighting by skylights, which provide ultimately daylighting on every square foot of the interior of the building. And the roof is a garden, a green roof, which continues this notion of dealing with the water and not creating impervious surfaces to accelerate water and storm water moving off the site. So this is the sequence of entrance. And then you'll see the view from the south, the view from the east, and the view from the west. This is a rendering of the building itself. And we have a series of detailed blow-ups. These are drawings in progress. So that, these are also in your set. This is the elevation, the south elevation that I mentioned, which does have the brise-lé and it's the one elevation that has the utilization of the glass. You can see as we go to the back of the building, that it's a series of punched windows, solid wall. This is the open stairwell, which is a tempered space, not energy-conditioned. And you get a complete view of the courtyard that is formed between the museum and the north side of the building. And you also have the open glass elevator that ties onto the roof for access to the Here, we're looking at the west elevation. This would be the entry point, again, the punched windows and the elevator beyond coming up to this level and the stair, which provides access and exit. And then this is looking at the east elevation. So you see the freestanding elevator, the punched openings on that side, the handrails, which are up at the garden level. And now that we're up to the garden level, we come to the plan of the garden, which shows the elevator arrival here, vestibule here, paved area. There's a use, right now, it's being developed, but a solar renewable utilization of PV as a shading trellis, which will be in this area. And then the open garden around, more like a zen garden or oriental treatment of that garden. And that's designed by Hollander and is in the process of being completed. So I guess I should leave up the garden and the overall site plan for any and all questions that you might have.
Did you consider solar on this building at all, solar panels?
Yes, we did. In other words, the ones that I mentioned with the solar trellis is solar panels. Those are going to be used as, and they will be on the extreme western portion here. We have a couple of different variations of how that renewable energy would be incorporated. And once again, it's the, I'm, our work goes back to doing the National Autobahn Building and the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm a founder of the U.S. Green Building Council. So you're, you're right on to one of the sort of fundamental dilemmas that we always have when we're talking about, how do we use solar?
Yes.
Here, we are using solar to displace electric lighting in the building almost entirely most of the day. And we will also be using solar thermal for hot water. But when we get to the roof, rather than doing PV all on the roof, we want to use it to absorb the water and rainwater and transvaporate that back into the environment and not do PV across the entire roof. We want the roof to be a part of nature and we want, but we want to utilize PV and renewable energy, but not as a 100%.
So you're using the solar for electricity for lighting?
Or, no, we're using, yeah, we're using the solar in such a way that we get diffuse light throughout the entire building as long as the sun is up. And the electric system is sensitive to that and will cut back to reduce consumption of electrical as long as there is adequate sunlight within the space.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Oh, okay. Let me say it again, more simply, which is just the fact that normal lights are continuously on. You flip the switch and they stay on exactly like these without change. In this building, which will have enormous amounts of daylight throughout-
Because you have the skylights.
Skylights and the south, and we're in a slender depth ratio, so we get deep, what we call deep daylighting. In other words, the brise-lé on the outside is actually bouncing the light. It's not coming at a straight angle to the floor. It's coming in and it's bouncing up to the ceiling. The ceilings are sloped, so they receive that light and bring it deep into the building. So it's a passive, deep daylighting system, which we've developed over the last 20 years and utilized in many settings. So it's a proven, you know, means and technology. All of that light, which is present with these smart lights, which immediately dim, they don't cut off, they continuously dim down in the presence of natural light. So you're, you're offsetting your electricity through the utilization of a passive lighting system. And the key is that the human body, circadian rhythm and seasonal and daily sense of well-being are all tied to the traverse of the sun, the time of day, the color of light. And when a cloud is passing in front of the sun, you get that pulsing quality. That's how we have evolved to live. And we've also evolved with our eyebrows and so forth to have a light canopy overhead. So we redirect the natural light to the ceiling. And that's very much the nature of this building. In the most successful building, we say, a day in the building will be, you will live a day in nature.
You have a passageway that goes through this building out to the, to the rear, to the museum, understanding?
Yes, we have. We basically have, the entry is set back at an angle, so that the front facade of the museum is open to the road and the main entrance is immediately open to the museum. So they share-
You have a graphic of that.
Yeah. So this is when you're coming in the driveway. And you can see that, I'm sorry?
From 39.
Yes, from 39, sorry. And so you see the facade of the museum here, which is very much a, you know, we've set up an equilibrium between those two as part of the entry sequence. And then if you look at the small vignettes, the one at the top right here, shows the relationship of the office building to the front of the museum. And more importantly, the next two images show you the space in between those two. So they share a courtyard. They have an opening and access in between the two buildings.
And the parking, you've configured the parking so that it's on that side, which really in some way minim, it takes away from the architecture of the arches. There's no way to get it on the other side, right?
What we've done is actually to put the bulk of the parking is tucked back here behind and to the side of the museum. So it's almost all on the, on the, on the east side of the building.
You just show a lot of cars parked there, that's what I was-
Yes, no, well, well, you do have the arrival. You have, you have a couple of parking, but if you'll look at the, let me just explain right here. Because I think you're hitting on a very, something that we tried to pay a lot of attention to. We have to have a certain number of visitors parking here who may be coming to the entrance at this location.
To the office building.
Right, to the office building. But at the same time, that same walkway is interconnected to the entrance to the museum. And the flagpole and this is all low planting here to keep a very strong, you know, sort of sense of sister buildings on this courtyard. So then we've tucked the parking, which is screened. The bulk of the parking is all here, okay? We've tucked it away. And the view, when you come in, is of all of this green area here. So we're emphasizing the green, providing convenience parking, and then of course-
And the car.
Yes, exactly.
Where's the cross-access to the monument place?
The cross-access is right. When you come here, you can come directly onto-
Okay, it looks like you've got all trees, so-
Yeah, I know. This, this is Hollander's, this is Hollander's plan. Our architectural site plan, do we have that set up? Well, it's about, it's right here.
Okay. So the museum will function as a museum, as an other museum?
Well, as I said, Skip, yes, as Skip will have the history of the company and he has a really wonderful 1932 initial offloader, truck loader, I'm sure I've got the wrong name, but that, that and several other, others will be part of this space, along with the history of the, it's a third generation company here in the community.
So if, if people go into the museum and they, they come in and they go completely around to park, how do they get into the museum?
Well, again, this is not a museum that is going to be promoting itself for heavy volumes of people coming. This is really a ancillary history of the company, convenience and replication of the historic nature of that building in the community. There's more than enough space to provide for visitors who do want to come, and I'm sure that they will be calling and if they want to see it, would be, it wouldn't be like a large promotion where you're going to have an auditorium event or something or a talk. That's not the nature of it. You would call Norsek and arrange to come and see the, to see the site.
So how many employees will be in the building?
The solar panels, since you get a relationship between the daytime electrics and the clouds, can we assume that there's no battery storage from the solar?
Right. I think it'll go into the baseload. I mean, that's what we typically do when we're in a situation like this. If it's, when we get up to higher capacities, like at Save the Bay in Providence, Rhode Island, we get into, we have to have an intermediate storage.
Right.
What I'm frustrated about is when I started out in this field back in the, in the early 90s and there were so many promises about the frictionless storage that would be available, you know, 15 years ago. And it just has not come along. So batteries, we, we don't like batteries. We either like to sell back into the grid or back into the baseload of the building because there are enormous environmental issues with battery storage.
Okay. So this is a, this is a plan and a system that you've utilized in other buildings?
Oh, yes. No, we did, you know, I sound like I'm bragging, but anyway, we did the, in a joint venture, we did the new headquarters for the EPA. And we developed all of the federal green standards that were used there, sustainable environmental standards that were adopted by the federal government. And we currently are in our 12th year as advising the Port Authority of New York. We began with the World Trade Center. We set all the unique urban-scale criteria for sustainability, environmental performance for the World Trade Center and reviewed all of the architects and projects that went through. So yes, this is, we, you know, this is our bread. We do this, we do this as a matter of course. It's not like we're going to charge extra to do this. This is just what we do.
The storage that is going to be used, is that just for Norsek trucks or other materials?
Yeah, no, this is, yeah, this, this does have, this does generate some of this parking. But it has no permanent employees in it.
What is going to be stored there? Any materials?
Just trucks, yeah.
No materials at this time?
No, at this time.
So the Norsek, Norsek, is Norsek moving its operations from 39?
No, they have, they have, they already have their operations on the north side of this, beyond this site.
Right, west of that, yeah. But they're, they're moving their office facility into-
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, their, their headquarters building now is further down on 39. And yeah, that will be relocated to here.
Yeah, I'm just seeing access to the buildings from that parking. I don't see, because I just see, I don't see like walkways.
Car, walkway, car, walkway, car, walkway. This comes along here, car, walkway, car, walkway, car, walkway, car, walkway.
She's talking about the east side.
Here? Yeah, now this is, this, 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 which is, this is employee parking, okay? And they have their own direct entrance into the building right here. That's also where the employee's time clock is. So this is, this entire parking rank here and this walkway and this access is for the internal community. And all of this, the parking out here and the greenways and the, and the walks are all for the public who would come basically just to pay bills or to, as I, as I said, it's a, there's no retailing, heavy commercial access.
Now, the rear portion, which is a separate property where the storage buildings are?
It's not separate. It's just has a different zone.
Okay.
Zoning, yeah.
Are we going to look at something? There are three buildings now.
So that, in that area, which is all of this, there were four existing buildings, here, 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 and here.
One is gone.
And, yeah, we took this one away. Early objections were that it was very close to an adjoining residential area, so we have pulled that away. And these are existing and would continue, actually, they will be new.
New buildings.
Yes. But, but, you know, very simple, again, metal structures.
And used for- Storage. Yeah, I'm just trying to define what storage is. Is that also trucks or is that materials?
That's materials and stored indoors.
Portisands.
I'm sorry?
Portisands, I think.
Yes, right. Clean, clean portisands, yes.
Was there any thinking about relocating or clustering those buildings? Or do you-
No, we just wanted to remain on the same. Frankly, frankly, we were, we were really focused on, on this as our primary focus and we wanted to leave, in other words, this is a pre-existing cut out onto Sandy Hollow Road and, and these are footprints that already existed, so.
And so the trucks that might be stored in the museum, the operational trucks will use that rear exit and then go out onto Sandy Hollow?
Well, there, there won't be a lot of in and out here, okay? These would typically be stored over time. It's not like it's a daily operation where they're coming and going. All of that is occurring up here. It's not part of this site.
Okay.
Well, I do. So I asked anticipation of SEQA, you had pointed out in your report, the archaeological, and that's come back and they do recommend it. They did 100- They did 129 shovel tests, and they had no recommendations for any further... You also asked for a look at the traffic, and they provided a rundown from Ron Hill who's done engineering, doing a traffic analysis. And because of the nature of the storage and office uses, it's not a high indicator for traffic as a use, as proposed. They do recommend no left turns on County Road 39, which I think is pretty...
That's a very tricky spot.
We have, yeah.
Right there.
The one thing I think the county has said so far is they don't know... This may be the existing entrance, is it the existing?
Yes.
You know, where that should be for site distances. That might be optimally to be removed to get a better site distance.
Move it somewhere.
Yeah.
They've suggested, look, they're gonna look at it, but they had suggested it might, you know, it might shift further to the north so that there was more visibility coming and going, so...
Which I think, you know, if that needs to be moved, I think should be...
Was there any conversation about a deceleration lane to get into this property?
Well, here's the gift from the gods. I don't know where this came from. There is actually a shoulder right here that comes out, so there's a curb right at the entrance. It's part of the traffic coming along here and turning, getting ready to make that turn at the stoplight. So there is a actual area, as you come up to that curb, that you would not be driving on if you're in traffic, you know? So it actually provides a degree of comfort in making...
Traffic that pushes to the left is actually a...
So it's not striped as a deceleration lane, but the effect is...
But coming from the east into this property, you're just coming right off County Road 39, right? There is no deceleration line.
Right, right.
Well, that's right on the curve there, Jackie, so...
Well, that's...
That's what I was saying. I'm sorry, you were saying coming from the east, and I was not paying attention. Coming from the east, there is that effect of the curb that pushes traffic that's passing further out, and you're turning traffic coming in, so that's actually...
Was that covered in the traffic analysis?
I haven't. I did only look at the recommendations at the end, so let me take a look at that, you know? We'll take a closer look at that. I'll give you copies of all this.
Yes.
I'll send it to you ahead of time.
So eastbound traffic, would you be directing that through the existing site out to Henry Road and off to North Sea Road?
The existing traffic that...
Thinking more about trucks.
It would be coming from the east...
Well, eastbound, leaving your site, how would you go east?
Right. I think that any truck that is owned by Norse, obviously 99% of it is, you know, not on this site, but one that wanted to enter in relation to the storage here would come off of Sandy Hollow. You know, they would... In other words, this is more of a public frontage here. This would not be a truck in and out, but this would be.
So those trucks, they'd make a right, go down to the stoplight, and then make another right and go to North Sea Road?
Precise.
Or...
Have to stand a little closer to be heard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, when you speak, this is the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
Or you can go through the light and continue down North Sea Road. You're going through that site, take over the Sandy Hollow line, go east.
You can't, but you could go over to McGee, right?
Yeah.
You could take the right onto McGee, and then take McGee to take the left.
Or you could continue down North Sea. I think it's better to go... One thing, you're channeling a lot of traffic past. You're going in the opposite direction, number one, and you're sending a lot of traffic past the school, which is stressed interest. I think it's better to head down to the North Sea Road and make the right and head up, at least you're further along in your destination.
So go up to Sandy Hollow and then make a right on North Sea and then go back at that light.
And who knows, depending on where you're going, you might opt to take Noack Road, you know? So probably wanted some signage.
Signage at the exits.
Yeah, 27 East.
It's quite an irony because I've lived and had a house in Sag... Home in Sag Harbor for 30 years, so I have been on this road a billion times.
You have been on it?
Yes, yes. Couldn't be more familiar with a road.
You just don't want to be the first car in that left turn lane because you shake as the cars go missing.
Yeah.
Exactly. I've been there many times.
Also, they submitted a Phase 1 environmental assessment for the property, I guess before they bought it, and it seems in order on the property. The one thing that I have, and I just told the applicant this, these are the things I think about at night. So north, the facility which is existing, you have approved it, there were some improvements not too long ago. They actually do the cleaning of the units there.
Which units?
The porta potties? Not... I'm not quite sure, and I don't want to misspeak, but I do know that they clean at the facility, whether it's the dumpsters or whatever they do. I'm just concerned that this representing an expansion of the use would then put another burden on the cleaning that's going on on that property. So maybe you want some information regarding that before you take a look.
Good point.
You know, you, in this case, I think the applicant's offered no cleaning at this facility, no outdoor storage, this would be only the storage of the facility, but if it represents a 25% expansion of their use and therefore they're cleaning 25% more, I just... I think we'd want that information.
Where is that cleaning being done now? Is that a different...
The northern property.
So if...
492.
That's not changing?
Well, if this was 25% expansion of their dumpsters, and they're gonna clean 25% more dumpsters on this site...
Because of this building?
Because of this new use in these buildings, yes. That's... I mean, it just... The question needs to be answered.
But it's a good one.
But didn't he say that the headquarters was moving from another place to here?
Yes.
Well, the headquarters is down the road at County Road 39.
I don't see why there's an increase. In other words, an increase in business would be a functional thing of other companies coming in here using the facility. The fact that they have bigger offices, I don't see them saying there's an increase.
I'm talking about the storage in the 1, 2, 3, 4.
No, 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 I know.
This is where the porta potties are going.
Yeah, but they're being cleaned on the other one.
Well...
Right, so if this represents...
So where are they being stored now?
That's a great question.
I think they're being... Are they being stored? Remember, there's buildings... There were buildings there before, correct?
This does not have any storage permitted now. They have to go ZBA to do that.
So my question, I think the question you're asking is, since they have the storage on the other property and they're adding three buildings here, are they increasing... Is that an increase in porta potties? That's the question.
That's my question, yeah. And then maybe it's not. Maybe it's a... Or maybe it's 5%, and then they can handle that on the other facility, and, you know, I'm just a question.
So this trail that goes through the wooded area, is that meant...
This road?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, road. Is it meant to...
It's existing.
Transport the porta potties from these storage buildings to the rear?
I think there are operations managers here. Brian's here.
Yes.
Brian, you want to come up? We can hear you, but you gotta use a...
You have to use the mic.
Stay close to the table so we can hear you on the mic. Or, Odie?
Hi, Brian Gilbride, one of the managers. As far as... I don't have to get sworn in or anything, though.
No.
That's what you did last...
Unless you've got something to hide.
That's ZBA, you don't...
Not yet. As far as cleaning porta potties, it's all done at 42 Sandy Hollow Road. Skip owns, excuse me, a property in Cromer Avenue in Calverton where a vast majority of restroom trailers and portable toilets are stored. There is also a storage area at 1625. There's usually a few hundred toilets stored at 42 Sandy Hollow Road where they're cleaned and sent out every day. They can back in, usually pumped out, and then they're cleaned on-site. Nothing is planned for this property. Storage only in some of the buildings. In the future, and we would be coming back to you guys, this is a fairly large expense for Skip as we're moving through this, so... Other than, we really thought this would only take place on the highway business property. That's why it's designed like it is. The other stuff, we're just using the buildings because they're there. They're really old, and honestly, today's pickup has a hard time fitting in those buildings because they're built for the '40s.
But you're replacing them and putting new buildings, aren't you?
At some point in the future, not now. You're talking about the Quonset Huts in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's...
It's a storage building. I thought we heard.
Yeah, I thought I heard that they were being replaced.
No, somebody did ask if we were to replace them, what would we do? And it's very possible that a concept drawing come down, that if we replaced them to make them efficient nowadays, it would probably be a Morton building that had that footprint but would be higher to allow a truck to get into. I mean, you're welcome to come down and look there. Well, my pickup truck, I have a GMC pickup truck that just barely fits in it, and if you had it in it, you couldn't close the door because they're rounded. But any other questions while I'm up here, please, you know, about the operation, please feel free.
So this is an expansion of the storage for your whole facility?
Uh, it's... I would... You would term it that way. I would say that Skip spent over $5 million and was making use of the property.
Oh, just square footage-wise.
Yeah.
I'm just saying...
As of right now, even though when Skip bought the property, there was truck frames, transmissions, rear ends and stuff outside. We don't have anything outside now.
So square footage-wise, you are taking...
There's no...
It says new square footage.
It's a small incremental addition to the storage.
Oh, I don't think he said... I think he said he's keeping the Quonset Huts, right?
Right now, yes.
Or no?
Yeah, there's nothing planned...
1, 2, 3, and then will the building that's being redone also have storage of porta potties in it?
No, that... The former auto museum?
Yeah.
No, that will in the winter store the residential garbage trucks. They'll back in there.
Okay.
And in the off-season, no, there will be no porta potties in there.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
Is there any chemicals being stored on?
No.
No chemicals?
No.
So what is exactly, is the application, is it an application to expand the storage use?
This is to change from one non-conforming use to another related to the rear property being residential.
And that's from the ZBA?
Yeah, that's from the ZBA, and then it comes to you for site plan.
Yeah, site plan.
Who's leaded it?
You are.
We are.
You assumed it last week.
Yes.
And, oh, no, actually, I think the meeting prior, and I thought it would be best if you saw the changes that had occurred to the applications since the pre-submission and to talk to you about the environmental, because we're at an action deadline with environmental for May 9. Are you comfortable with this?
Is any of the museum expansion and all that, is that gonna happen on... We're anticipating it's gonna happen on this property?
The what?
The expansion of the sanitary equipment use, for lack of a better word.
The storage of the porta potties and dumpsters, I assume.
So there's really two separate applications?
No, it's one.
No, one. We're looking at it as one application.
It's just a split zone, John.
Uh-huh.
But what I think I heard is that the three existing buildings will continue to be utilized in the same way.
Yes.
This, the museum, you're gonna have the office building that's brand-new, and the museum, when it's reconfigured, is gonna be able to store trucks that basically are not being used.
In the winter, yes. And just if I could clear one thing up, because I'm sitting in the back, and the older I get, the less I hear, but just to make it clear, there will be no trucks exiting 39 and coming on. Everything goes through Sandy Hollow Road. If they're going east, it's out Sandy Hollow Road to the east. If they're going west, it's out onto Sandy Hollow Road up and through the turn you guys were talking about to go west. Nothing on Henry Road, all residential. Sandy Hollow Road is the entrance and exit.
Yeah, there's another entrance that the trucks use further north that we're not seeing on this map.
Further north, on Sandy Hollow Road, you mean? Yes. That's the main one that's part of 42 Sandy Hollow Road, which I think we were here...
We don't see that, Claire.
With you guys.
It's not north of this.
It's further... We're not seeing it.
It doesn't show on any of these plans.
No. It'd be good to see it.
Anyway, good start.
Thank you. Very nice presentation.
Yep.
Beautiful.
Beautiful building.
Nice presentation.
My greenness is making me feel good, and I'm even wearing it today.
You'll be an example for the community.
We see this as an example of our project, and this will be... I trust this will be supporting your mission.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sliding right?
Oh, yeah, I'll take that.
This is true, John. Hey, we're closing the work session and opening the afternoon session. Who wants... Claire, you want to go?
I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
Which number are we doing?
She'll tell us in a moment. I hope she will. I can't hardly wait.
It should be number four.
Anthony, do you have a copy of the agenda?
I'm gonna take a chance on four.
This evening's agenda?
Spin the wheel?
Yeah, I said... Hearings for tonight, do you have those?
Perfect, great. Thanks, Ron. I'm gonna go to number five, T-Mobile Jagger Path.
Jagger Path, Verizon.
We're lucky enough to get three applications for cell towers in the last two weeks. This is a location that already has a cell tower. It's 90 feet tall. Planning board approved it at 80 feet tall, and administratively, Kyle gave an additional 10 feet when it was mistakenly noticed that it had been built at 10, you know, 90 feet tall. In this case, the applicant, this is an existing junkyard.
Junkyard?
Junkyard. That is north of Montoc Highway and south of the railroad... No, north of the railroad tracks.
North?
In beyond.
Yeah.
So it's behind, you actually have to go over the railroad tracks to come to the site.
Aerial in your package.
Yeah, you see all cars.
See the cars.
Yep.
So it was built, you approved it, it was built, and it's functioning pretty well, and they would like the extension, which requires a special exception process. So they're beginning that now, and we'll schedule it for the next available meeting in November, which is May 23.
Are there residences, any residences located here?
No, there are not. This is... It's ideal in that case. It is located in the Allied 40 zoning district.
But now will be IDA? No, no.
They're proposing to be 100.
100, okay. Kyle had given it 10?
They had given it, he had given it.
Tell Kyle he can't do it administratively.
He can.
No, by code, he can.
He can?
Yeah, once.
On cell towers? Yes, 10 feet once, which they got.
May 23.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
How does, how does something get approved at one point and then accidentally get built 10 feet taller?
Because he has the right to do it.
No, no, he was a.
He did it.
No, he did it, he didn't have the right to do it, he had to go to get an administrative.
Permission.
I'm just. Well, we doubled his fees, don't worry, they doubled their fees, which is what happens when something, people do by mistake.
I hear you, it's a concern.
You hear what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
It's absurd.
They asked for permission thereafter, you know, I mean, it's not ideal, it's not typical. They were given approval for 80.
For 80?
They built it 90, and then they had to go back and use up that one 10-foot administrative approval that they get. So that's already been used, so to allay your concerns, which are legitimate, but to allay them, they would have gotten it anyway, because they are entitled to that one 10-foot administrative extension.
So we'll do it and we'll forgive it after.
But now this one is different, now this one is another 10 feet, so they have to come back before this board.
I just have this, I switch, okay, it's a built-in switch, because you know that the intent was to build it at 90, get the administrative, but came to us at 80. And somehow that little bit of.
Oh, I wouldn't be that cynical, come on.
Oh, it's just, that offends me.
It's a joke.
Yeah, it offends me.
Yeah.
And then the same action, which you don't see in the resolution, but I will add, is language related to the site plan application itself, I am actually recommending it be deemed incomplete. It is an issue with timeframes in the federal government, they have, if you want to speak.
Sure, so in September of 2018, the FCC issued the declaratory ruling and third report and order on these cell towers, and what that essentially dealt with were new, what they call shot clocks. So this preempts our any timeframes that we have at the state level, the federal FCC has said, okay, you have to abide by these shot clocks when all municipalities and administrative agencies are approving or looking at wireless towers. The 2018 order really dealt with what we call small wireless facilities, which what you're going to see today doesn't qualify anymore, but having said that, they took the opportunity, the FCC, when they issued that report in 2018, to codify two other timeframes, two other shot clocks, that do affect a lot of our applications. One is a 90-day timeframe for the addition of equipment on existing towers, the co-location, which is what is before you right now, and 150-day shot clock for new wireless facilities, and you have two on the agenda after this application. When I talk about the shot clock timeframes, that is from the date that it is handed in, it is not from the date that something is deemed complete, it is not from the date that this board decides that your requirements have been met. There are pauses in that shot clock, but they have to be delivered to the applicant in writing, and they have to be very clear and complete. We can pause it for 30 days, but we have to be very clear why we are pausing that review, and once they give us the information that's missing, then again, the shot clock starts up again.
From scratch, or from where it was left off?
No, from where it left off.
Do you have a copy of that legislation? An email to us?
I can email it to you, it's.
Lengthy?
Yes, but I have no problem, I can scan it and email it to you.
Do we have to incorporate that into our master plan?
I think there should be some adjustments to our master plan and the code.
Well, it kind of overrides the master plan.
In fact, secret, a lot of our applications are typed wrong.
That is what we're going to still work on.
We're concerned about that, that's a legitimate concern. Nowhere in this very dense document does it speak to state secret requirements, and again, it doesn't preempt our ability to look at them and apply our zoning and building and architectural concerns, but it does apply a timeframe within which we have to do that. And it's a very real timeframe, and there is a default approval mechanism, so that if we don't meet that timeframe, the presumption is that it's our fault, and we have to explain to the court why we didn't meet that timeframe. So we do want to make our best effort to fall within that timeframe, but of course, the applicant still has to provide us with everything that we need. But, you know, the regs are clear that, once you give them the list of items that may be missing from an application, if you give them a subsequent list, it better be something that was in your first list, it can't be new items. So it's just really making the municipality work arguably extra hard to get, make sure the applicant gets you everything. The intent, so to speak, the intent is supposed to encourage voluntary pre-submission discussions by the applicant with the municipality. Whether or not that happens is out of our control.
Would that be a company that does this?
Yeah.
The clock starts on the day it comes in over the transom, not when it's deemed complete?
Correct.
So if you have a, how could you have a pre-submission conference if?
Well, so we've been talking.
Contradictory, isn't it?
We've been talking about having to possibly waive pre-submission conferences in these scenarios, because.
Well, we could change the definition of what a pre-submission conference is.
For this, for cell towers?
Cell towers, it could be a work session, I produce the reports, applicant gets it in two weeks, and that's the pre-submission conference for cell towers.
Right.
It could be something different, so.
So you're thinking about that, doing that?
Yeah, this just, you know, I saw the webinar last third Friday, and then we got all these applications, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, it went into effect January 2019.
January 2019, you just got the information?
This is the first applications that we've had that are applicable.
I think they're saying that it's up to them, not up to us, these applications.
Sending a message.
I think what it's saying is it makes it easier for the applicants.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Right, and I have to say, I think this is for maybe places that don't have timeframes, and we have timeframes, so, but our timeframes might be seven months and not 150 days, so, you know, we have to work within that.
Some of the intent is also if, to encourage municipalities to review their timeframes so that they are more compatible with these shot clock timeframes.
For cell towers.
For cell towers specifically, nothing else.
So, that's it.
So, I am recommending that we set the pre-submission conference, but deem the site plan special exception application incomplete based upon the checklist that I provided you.
So, do you want one, one motion?
One motion.
Incomplete and set a pre-submission conference?
For May 23.
And the clock is where on this now?
So, once you adopt this resolution, then the clock will be paused?
April 8th was the date it was submitted, and I will keep.
April, yeah.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, seven in favor.
Clock is stopped.
Now it's paused.
Clock is paused.
Pause. Hold your breath.
So my next one, and by the way, we got another one today. I actually thought, I thought we were getting more.
Were they waiting for this legislation to go through?
Yeah, obviously.
You think?
I think I might make Matt do that one. This one is a proposed 125-foot cell tower on the rear of the Ethan Allen site in Watermill. That right now, the Ethan Allen is the retail store on the front, there is a special trade contractor use in the middle, and then in the rear is a vacant piece of property, except you can see on the aerial that they chose to store Range Rovers on the property. So we kindly told them maybe shoot cease stops, and they probably will be giving a violation soon.
Well, it's not going to meet the fall zone unless they change that regulation.
No.
It's okay, Range Rovers are.
This one, this one's 125, there is three examples of some alternatives, one including a tree on the property, it is external antennas on this monocle, yes, and it would not meet the fall zone to the property.
External, so it's not a stealth tower?
It's not a stealth tower, so we.
But aren't people, I mean, one they did in Bridgehampton disappears, you know, it's a stealth.
Yeah.
It's painted this sort of bluish gray.
It worked, yeah.
Nothing external, so can we, according to the law, recommend that they have in it? We can, okay.
So in this case, yeah, in this case, they know that they have to provide visual analysis to you before you do the environmental review. There is concern, as you see in the aerial, again, there is the farm fields with a visible, very visible view from that road, blanking on one, no, I'm done, is the road going north? I forget.
Have they, have they provided the need for this coverage? What is their closest tower? Because we have a lot of towers going on now.
That will be the information that's required in the site plan review, but this is the application, this is what's required at this stage, is the alternatives across for the pre-submission.
Yeah, Watermill to Bridgehampton. These towers don't meet our standards, you'd be option for denial then, right?
Absolutely, you can still, yes, and I appreciate that, and I apologize if I made it seem like you still under your zoning code don't have the option or opportunity to deny these if they don't fit your criteria, but just in terms of our timeframes, that's what we're guided by.
Thank you for that.
And to also be clear, to the extent it's applicable, an applicant can always agree to toll or pause the shot clock if they are so inclined.
So, like the previous one, I am recommending that we set the pre-submission for May 23, and like the previous one, I gave you a checklist, and I'm recommending that the site plan special exception application be deemed incomplete.
Motion, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, seven in favor.
And that one was received, it related to just, yeah, permission.
So you didn't, you only wanted one, one?
One resolution.
One resolution?
Yes.
Oh, we, I see, Homeland is wanting Tuckahoe as well.
Yes.
150 foot, now this is 50 feet above our requirement.
This is, no, actually, we don't have our requirements, well, this is residentially zone, so there's definitely a couple issues on this one. This one's a little different, because I'm actually going to deem it incomplete with regard to a plan. In this case, if you look at the aerial, there is a house on the property. And there is also wetlands adjacent to the property, which is an avoidance area, so are houses, stepbacks.
Never meet a fall zone, so it's got a lot of stuff going against it.
This, this case, I called them up, I said, if you get me the site plan by Wednesday, I can get you on, you know, a site plan that reflects the existing conditions on the site, so I was very specific in this resolution regarding that, but deem it incomplete also with the checklist, which I.
Yeah, have they been in the hopper, these applications, and all of a sudden they just appeared, or they just appeared?
Just appeared on my voice.
Is there something else in this regulation that is making it more amenable to submit these now, because when three come down with a new register, with a new regulation?
Good night, I mean, arguably, the 90 and 150-day shot clocks, as they term it, those have been, those were part of a 2014 wireless order that the FCC put out, and they've been codified now, so while it was practiced before, they have come forward now in this new order and said, we're going to codify these timeframes. So to the extent that people were, you know, facilities, wireless facilities and businesses saw that this was going to come down because the drafts were out in September of last year, they probably did wait.
Is there any other changes in terms of, that where the federal law is now overriding ours that make any difference in terms of how they build them, or any of the codifications on this?
No.
Because I'm just feeling very, what, cynical?
Cynical.
That three applications come down, January 19th, you got a codification of new regulations, we have a lot of regulations between EPA and a lot of agencies that are being relaxed. We get three applications that come all under new, have we lined up these new regulations with ours to see if there's anything else hiding in these extensive?
Not from what I can see, from what I can see, as I articulated earlier, they deal with small wireless facilities, which these are not, and the timeframes associated with that, then it has codified the timeframe associated with other than, is how they term it, small wireless facilities.
How do they define small wireless?
Actually, there's a square footage reference, and that's referring to those, the small cells that they put on in the utility right of ways usually, or on sides of buildings, which our code speaks to, our management speaks to, so, you know, we're ready for that in terms of, and, those are more expedited with our process for the most part, so, we haven't come across that yet, they have not come to us.
So the only change you're seeing right now is in terms of the conflict between their time schedule and ours, our time schedule, and that's the only thing that you're, okay, I'm just.
They, they talk about fees, but I don't see that as having an effect on this municipality.
Claire, is there, the wireless master plan, it's up online, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And I would suggest we all read it again.
Yep.
And are you going to be amending it soon?
Well, I need to talk to the long range planning division, because obviously, we've been talking to this, about this for a couple days amongst current planners, they are very aware of it, and we're gonna, we're gonna see how, you know, not only us, but everybody's reacting to this, there's other planners that are reacting to this, so it's a, it's a good thing to look at this.
East Hampton as well.
Or if we're all in the same boat, so, again, I saw a webinar on Friday, this is how I really came to know about this, and there's more than one out there about this, so I'm going to, you know, obviously, we're going to look at that and see how it is with our master.
So, Robin?
Okay.
Is this a fear of yours that federal government is going to come in and really start taking over?
No, not take over, that they will relax the regulations, which will resurf our, they relax their regulations, if I'm correct, federal government relaxes regulations, can we have more strict, or there's going to be a balance?
In this scenario, they would preempt, but they're not relaxed, right now, they're not relaxed.
But that's what my concern is.
Right now, it's just a timeframe issue.
They're practicing how they can do this.
Yeah, I'm, that's my concern, when, when some things happen like this, it just triggers, we have to take a really strong look at it, because there could be something else coming down the pipe, usually it comes down in bundles, so.
So this, in this case, I'm recommending incomplete for both aspects of the application, the pre-submission and the site plan application.
Excuse me?
No hearing.
No hearing, until they submit the basic site plan information showing the existing conditions.
Okay, I'll move it.
Motion by Robin, second by Dennis, all in favor. Opposed, abstention, seven in favor.
Okay, and then my next one is Shinakak Hills, number nine. Yes. So where we're at with this is in January, you considered this application for completeness, this is for the gates.
Was that issue with the ownership of the property we clarified, that the highway superintendent flagged?
Do we have copies of the letter for the board?
I think in the.
It was in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay.
Not, not Jim's email, but their letter, yes.
This is the attorney's letter.
Okay, right, correct, so the April 24, 2019 letter from Council Tony Pasca has been reviewed and accepted by the town attorney, so basically, it says, to the extent that there is a cloud on title, the applicant acknowledges that they will then remove the gate, so this, any approval that you're inclined to give would be subject to any future cloud.
So they can figure it out?
Not with 100% certainty.
But you're recommending that we go with it?
The town attorney has issued, reviewed the letter from, has authorized.
This is my cynical day, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm just going to stay cynical all day.
I recommended, based upon your last discussion in January, that you were not comfortable deeming this application complete without the title issue being resolved, and I strongly recommended someone be here to talk about it, but no one could attend. You have, you have several, what I'd be most comfortable with, if you're not comfortable, is deeming the application incomplete.
Right.
We can bring it up in two weeks, if the applicant would like to come and speak further about the application.
Exactly, because.
There's some rather harsh language in here from Mr. Redder.
That was also what you had seen at the January meeting, and.
And that's what put us.
And I noticed, you know, that until it's resolved, we can really move on.
So, deeming it incomplete, I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, seven in favor, it's incomplete, so.
But are we going to now ask the applicant to clarify, attend and clarify, I mean, the title report?
I always give the applicants the option to come and speak to you regarding an application. an application.
So the, the town attorney has worked closely with, um, a title company, um, which has, as my, as I understand, it revealed, much of what the town attorney's review revealed, which is that it is very likely that this, um, road has been turned over to the golf club, but to, there's no one hundred percent, they haven't arrived at a deed, a document, they can't claim it with one hundred percent certainty, so, um, in working with Mr. Pasca, the town attorney has felt that, um, as long as the applicant gave assurances, that they would remove it if, um, at the end of this review, it did turn out that the road was not, um, belonging to the golf club, that they would remove it.
Can't they do that now, Kathy?
No.
Can't they just clear it up now, and do the paperwork and the research?
Well, the prob-, I mean, the, that's the effort that's ongoing.
Uh-huh.
They're not able to find that smoking gun, so to speak, that final deed that turns it over, and it may not exist, um, and so that's kind of, um, where the title company and the attorneys are, um, at right now.
But they're actively working on it?
They are, um, but, um, I don't know that they're go-, it's, any further research will reveal anything further, so the town attorney and Mr. Pasca felt that instead of holding this up, that they, if the board was so inclined, you could approve it, subject to, um, the applicant guaranteeing that they would, and acknowledging that they would remove the gates, if in fact, it turned out it wasn't their road.
Doesn't public use govern if there's some ambiguity, the title, over the years? I mean, going back, I personally could use that road. Many of the people who have, you know, we take the good sleigh ride, is that, does that come to play at all, or?
Uh, I think it's part of the discussion. I can't say that it's, it's the.
Is this the road they want to privatize and cut off?
Yes, yes.
No.
No, no, it's not. That's a north-south road. This is the east-west road, um, by the Montessori school.
Right.
Where there's, there's always been, so to be clear, there has been fencing, fencing there, and they want to replace the fencing with the gates. Um, and that is that east-west road that then brings you to the north-south road of, um, Tuckahoe Lane, or Tuckahoe Road.
They had the gates up for the open.
But by putting the gates there, it would be an announcement to the public, and to everyone that there is, is this private, private property.
Yeah.
Which is a, a very definitive statement.
That was in question.
And if we participate.
I'm just, well, that's the point I'm making, participate, we're making a statement on that. Are they going into court for it, would it be a declaratory judgment?
And/or a mandamus, an Article 78 under mandamus, for, for them, for this board to process that application in the first instance, and allow the application to go forward, and second, for a declaratory judgment action. Um, so, but again, I, to be fair, there, there, there is, um, there is fencing there, and they're replacing it with gates, so, um, it's not that there has, in terms of announcing it, so to speak, there has been a structure there, they're just looking to change the structure.
Not easy.
No.
But I'm done. Um, I'm just recognizing, uh, number 20, if you have any questions. It's called Le Verge, which was the original application. It was known as Almonds before it moved to the corner. It's the one that's, uh, north of the highway, west of, uh.
Bridge in Bridgehampton.
Bridgehampton. It was called Hudson Blue most recently, but I think it's gonna change its name again.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Usually, it's been called Stop Work With The Yellow Sign.
Yeah, so they, they got a stop work order, hmm.
Restaurant.
It's torn apart.
Yeah, I guess what happens with that is that every time they would do something, something would fall apart, that, this is what it says.
Very old building.
No, but windows and doors being replaced, and they're also enclosing a porch that had occupancy that Planning Board had granted, they enclosed it, uh, and, um, so that's part of the application.
What about parking?
And they're refreshing the siding, I think it's gonna be, um, hardy plank now, and.
No, parking.
Parking is the same, uh, except the original site plan, um, restricted the parking in the fronts, so it will be cleaned up, it's going to have landscaping in the fronts, and no longer an open curb, to the two open curb cuts.
So this is an administrative site plan again?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what's, what's, what's your issue?
I, I.
There are a lot of ingredients in this, moving parts.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason we're going administrative instead of it coming before us?
It meets all the requirements for administrative, there's no increase in square footage, there is no increase in parking, there is no use being increased, there's no occupancy being re-increased. It, so, it's really refacing the existing building, that's what it came.
And adding a porch or enclosing something, what was that?
Enclosed the rear porch, that, you know, had been there for 25 years, but they never got approval for, um, but, so they enclose that, but it doesn't increase occupancy because you, the planning board, had approved it in 1979 for occupancy on that porch.
And it's the end of people.
So our administrative review requirements are windows and doors and siding, as I remember.
Uh, and no increase more than a thousand square feet or ten percent of building.
Change in tenancy.
Uh, change in tenancy, that doesn't increase the occupancy, and therefore requires more parking.
Is this change of tenancy, because this building sold?
Not change, change in tendencies or admins or just building permits. Yes.
Okay, I'll turn my cynical off for this one.
Hopefully, it'll look better, ARB, fully reviewed.
That's our concern.
We do, we, you know.
You know.
Kyle knows that, that, that we have concern about administrative.
If you think that you want some of the, the power back, you know, for reviews with this planning board, please take a look at it. Look at the standards. But we try to make it, and so, someone's doing a 200 square foot addition that nobody sees, that's not before you.
That's a different thing. This building is completely torn apart, and I drove by it, I thought, we haven't seen the site plan on that, what's going on?
They didn't demolish it, right?
Nearly.
Nearly. I went by it today.
Did it?
So, I mean, see, an administrative review in an old building, once you start, can lead to all kinds of things, and unless somebody from staff is there checking on it all the time, it becomes a much larger project.
I'll check tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make sure it's within the scope for the application, okay?
And if it isn't.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be done.
It'll come back.
Okay.
Definitely, okay?
Who's up? Anthony?
So there's no motion on that?
No.
Just our information, yeah. Anthony.
Number three, Hayward property.
Number three.
Take one and test, uh, copy of the aerial and the map. This is, um, a final subdivision application for two, uh, two-lot subdivision of a property 70 Scuttle Hole Road, um, and Watermill. Uh, it's OD, office district zoning, we did a pre-app on this about a year ago. Um, there's an existing residence, uh, the applicant will be building a second residence, not a commercial use, a residence is actually a special exception use in the office district, so we'll have to come for, for that application, although we did give the applicant the opportunity to address both during the subdivision, but they opted not to. Uh, they have the health department application, they did their archaeological, um, so this is a final application. I'm recommending, uh, deeming it complete and having a 30-day written comment period as opposed to a hearing. We didn't have any comments during the first one, and, uh, it's pretty, pretty simple. And the hearing will be for May 23rd.
How many, how many hearings? No, I thought you said no hearing.
No hearing.
Oh, I just said, that's sorry, that's right. I said no hearing and then gave you a hearing date.
Yes.
That's good.
Having a senior moment. All right?
So it's complete.
Complete and a 30-day written comment period.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, seven in favor.
You guys could just send that down to John.
Thank you.
You know, this system is really good if everybody could use this. It's a small map.
I noted your comment.
Aerial.
It depends on the, uh, the maps and everything, but, uh, this is number.
Four.
Four, this is a new application. I've attached the aerial and, uh, the map, passing it down.
Sorry, I'm. This is completeness?
It's just completeness. Uh, it's a two-lot subdivision in the R40 zoning district and the archeological sensitive area. Property's in Neuyak, it's at 2899 Neuyak Road, that's got an existing residence on the property, uh, they're proposing a two-lot subdivision, there are a little bit of wetlands, um, but it meets all these zoning requirements when you exclude it. Um, and this one, again, was just to deem it complete, and this one, pre-application, so we scheduled a hearing for May 23rd.
This, have we waived the cluster?
Yeah, yes, we could, well, yes, we could absolutely waive the cluster here, um, just because it's not surrounded by open space or anything like that, and the wetlands area is gonna be protected through the wetland buffers and the, you know, whatever is.
It looks, I mean, from this aerial, it looks like they're sizable.
Big lots, they exceed the, um, you know, the minimum lot size, um, in that zoning area, and so I think when you apply the wetland setbacks.
And when were they flagged, the wetlands?
Uh, it should be noted on the map, I had that noted.
So, would the second lot be a flag lot?
It is a flag, yep.
It was March. March 20th, 2018.
There you go, about a year ago, so. Um, so I was recommending deeming it complete and scheduling the hearing for May 23rd.
Motion by Dennis, second by Jill, all in favor. Opposed, abstention, seven in favor. How many hearings does that give us for the 23rd?
That's number three.
Number three?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we had the two. I do have one more, I have one more to go on the 23rd.
For public hearing.
For public hearing, yeah. So we are up to three, you said?
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep count.
More staffers.
Do you have any? You do?
Well.
So Anthony, what's next for you?
Um, number nine, uh, no, number nine.
Eighteen. Speonck Properties, unit 24.
We have number eight, what happened?
Yeah, properties, and just giving an aerial for this one.
It's the eight now.
This is just an aerial, um, everybody knows Ed Burdy's site on Speonck Riverhead Road, um, I always tell you, this has been around since the beginning of time, we've been site planning this, um.
Oh, gosh, yes. There's more he can.
No, no new building, actually, let me just, if you look on the aerial, if I could just take one of, one of those real quick.
Oh.
On the north end of the property, they're dealing with the north, the northernmost building up here, does he know the, unit number 24? Uh, all they're looking to do in there, there had been a special trade contractor in there, um, this is a towing business, um, it's a one-man operation, he deals with a lot of municipalities, um, it's a towing and auto repair business, because in order to have the license for the towing, you have to have the auto repair, um, so I had deemed them, we had deemed them incomplete a couple of weeks ago, they gave me some revised plans, and I was just going to deem it complete and schedule the hearing for the 23rd. No new, it's, it's just existing space.
Is the hearing required?
What's that?
Hearing required.
Yeah, special exception for towing, yeah, and actually for auto repair, so if we, but deem it complete for the 23rd.
All right, I'll move it. It'll be number four.
Yeah. Um, motion by Dennis, second. By Robin, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, seven in favor.
That was a tough one, wasn't it?
So you were.
I have a good.
Anthony, you've gone through all the special exception standards and your.
Well, we, we absolutely will as part of our, uh, report, but I, uh, if there's ever any question about my ways, we'll deem them incomplete, uh, so we're okay. Um, the next one is Madsen.
Number 10.
Number 10. Does the board have the report? If not, I have a problem.
Yep.
My computer isn't working.
Yeah, I, I, we know how I feel.
Your computer isn't working?
No, it's, it's saying it.
And, and mine didn't.
I've got it.
Worked, which I know is good, so.
My computer's.
So there.
So this is, um, uh, we had a pre-application hearing on this, it's in East Bog, it's in the R20 zoning district, uh, on Montalk Highway, 416 Montalk Highway, um, so we had a pre-hearing, and so we just want to go through the pre-application report, it's a pretty straightforward, a simple subdivision, um, so on the first page of the report, it's a standard plan, a cluster is not necessary in this case, uh, next page, it's a minor subdivision, uh, it conforms with all the zoning requirements, uh, the existing structure as well, once you draw the new lot line, it conforms, that's a type-two action under SECA, the park fee is assessed against one additional lot, because there's an existing residence, um, we got public comments, uh, limited to the neighbor who came to see what was happening, and didn't particularly have any issues. Um, the Long Island Workforce Housing Act is not applicable here, under the referrals, um, the town engineer's comments for the standard with the two-inch covenant for a two-inch rainfall event, uh, but no other issues, uh, Office of Fire Prevention, uh, the street addresses have to be consistent with the town assessor's requirements, other than that, no, no requirements.
Is there water?
There's, yep, there is public water there with hydrants, um, highway department, no comments, um. But the comments from the engineer, uh, from the highway department are not correct, actually, in, in the report, they're supposed to, uh, he actually didn't have any comments, and I forgot to change that, I used a different, it's from a different, uh, report, so.
So no comments?
So no comments from the, from the highway department. Uh, health department doesn't have an application yet, trails advisory board said there's no trail implications, uh, oh, I did put the highway department in, and there, yeah, no objections. Uh, if you look.
Map.
So, Department of Public Works, DPW, this is Montalk Highway, came back with some, uh, comments, as you could see there, however, I think those are probably going to change only because, um, I'm recommending a single common driveway here, with this property, so. Um, and then we didn't get any comments from the fire district, the CAC, or landmarks.
That's a single driveway, Anthony, we, I don't need to look at.
Are you gonna do it right in the middle?
You took mine and.
Oh, sorry.
We were, you know, I mean, there's the existing curb, I'm looking at the existing curb, which is sort of oriented toward the existing house, if you look at the aerial, that cut is right.
Right down, yeah.
Right by the intersection, I don't know if it makes sense to funnel traffic into that existing, but, I mean, I know the area very well, you know.
You know, if you, I always put the recommendations in, and then we, we take them out if they're not, you know.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's got a lot of frontage, if it were narrower, and you could funnel the traffic into one, but the fact that it's so spread out, you basically have, have to have a driveway that's fucking, you know, kind of a convoluted.
Yeah, all right, so on the recommendations, we could take that out. I don't have a problem with that.
It's a pretty good site. You recommending another?
Yeah. Get up to two. Um, which goes up to the second point, if you look at the aerial, I only recommended[1663.66] If you look at the aerial, I only recommended the 50-foot conservation buffers only because we did it on the adjacent subdivision next door. I'm not big on buffers if we don't need them. In this particular case, I'm looking at the aerial, I don't know that it makes sense in this property to put-
Why are you not a fan of buffers?
Only if they make sense. In other words, here-
Is it wooded, or?
A part of it is and part of it's not. So I put it in so the board could have the discussion. If you think it's necessary, we could keep it in. If not-
Listen, it's always good to have some greenery and trees.
I disagree. I'm just saying, I, I shouldn't say I don't like buffers. I like them where they make sense. They don't always make sense. We get a lot of buffers that, you know.
It would be nice to have green-
But we could do that there. I don't have a problem with that.
The, the back property has the buffer? This property here?
Yeah, all those lots there do, but in the front there-
They all have buffer here?
Yeah, and, and to the-
And on this side?
No.
Because the street is preserved.
These properties here.
Oh.
And the front is really important. So I, we could do the 50-foot in the front like I have it written. Number three, it's in a high priority area, so they'll have to do the new IA system. And I put them on notice that the Health Department may require that they upgrade the existing house before they get anywhere. Engineers, just compliance with the covenant, compliance with the Town Office of Public Safety regarding addresses, and then submission with the Health Department. So we could take out the common driveway. I put it in because it's Montalk Highway, the intersection, you know, so, but if it's not necessary, then-
If it were, as I say, if it were a narrow lot, I'd be right on board with that.
I don't have a problem with that. And if the board's okay with keeping the 50-foot buffer, then we'll keep the-
Yeah, we'll keep it.
Sure. Are the high priority areas online?
Yeah.
Yes.
Our GIS system will, shows you medium and high. Shows them both. It's on a, on a layer.
Will it test all, or you had ground order?
I only recommend it in the middle and that it would just fan off to each way, but I also acknowledge that would require getting rid of the other driveway. And it, so, I wasn't married to the idea. I just like to throw it out there in case, and usually a board member will tell me, this road is terrible, this makes sense, this road is not so bad, so, in this case.
If the existing house has a garage, where is it in relation to the current driveway?
That's right. And, and that's where it goes into, the attached garage.
So that, that would be a pretty big hardship.
It would be a hardship, yeah.
There's a boat on Montalk Highway, is that the same piece we're talking about?
Uh, there's a boat?
Like, there's a story of boat in front yard for years. No?
Not as far as I know on this property. No, no garage.
That's the one next door, John.
Next door? Yeah. We have a violation situation, John? So with the change of eliminating the common driveway requirement, I think that-
And don't fit to take out the, to-
I've already Xed that out on my copy.
We'll adopt the report.
Okay, a motion by Dennis, second.
Second.
Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, seven in favor.
Can't hear me today, Jeff.
That's like, sorry. Speak up, I'll get you next time.
So these also have the aerials attached to the maps?
Twelve, Metro Storage.
Number 12, Metro Storage. So everyone here is familiar with Lee Con Court, right next to Wilhanson's Golf Range there. The, that comes there. Metro Storage has a facility in there already.
Was this 80,000 square feet an error in the, in the text, or is that true?
Pretty big.
Forty thou, 40,000 square foot.
Yeah, 40,000. No, that's correct.
Yes?
Yeah. So everyone looks at the aerial, you know exactly where we are here. We had a pre-submission conference for, for this property, Metro Storage. It's a 40,000 square foot building, that's two stories, for a self-storage facility. It is in the Newark Archaeological Sensitive Area, but you'll see when we get to the SEACRA component, that was already addressed on a prior site plan application, which I note in the first page of this report here. There was actually a site plan approval for this property back in 2004 for a 20,000 square foot building, but it was one-story. It was for special trade contractor and warehouse uses. So that never came to be, so they came in with this new application, which is special exception for self-storage. And it's now 40,000 square feet, but it's two stories.
Are the other buildings about 20,000 square feet?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, they are.
So this will be the only two-story building?
This is a two-story build. Then my, I don't know if there's a two-story down on 10 Lee Con Court where they're- There you go. But let me get one, I'm done. Let me get up, yeah. So on page, on the second page, we had a pre-submission conference on March 13th with a 30-day written comment period. There were no comments received during that time period. So I have some comments here. It's actually a fairly straightforward site plan application, you know, considering the size of the building, but-
I go, I'm going to write to your comment for Anthony. And we're going to need some work on that north elevation.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, we'll get to that part, yeah. The first point is that it's a special exception and they have to submit a petition subject to 33122, which is the general standards, and then there's specific standards under 162.4.
And it's special exception because of self-storage?
Yes, the mini, the self-storage facility is a special exception use in LI40.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes I never know.
Code, the gold code.
The old quote. Per the plan submitted, it doesn't show on the building plans that there's a main entrance to the front of the building because floor plans show that there's two entrances on the sides of the building. So they don't show a main entrance on the front of the building. And my understanding is, I say in here, is that the office for Metro Storage, because it doesn't look like on the floor plans, there's an office building in there, is the facility down on 10 Lee Con Court or whatever the address is. So that's my assumption, I think, based on what was stated previously, and we'll get clarification. So right here, it just looks like it's just an additional storage unit with access on the sides. But then you go to point three. If you look at the site plan, they do show the handicap parking spaces and access in front of the building, which aren't evident on the building plans. So there may be some way to address the, like you said, the front elevations there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like the back of a-
I actually, Dennis, you say that, I, my thought was it looks like the, the back of a building. I didn't want to say that, like here, I try to, you know, but that's what it looks like. It looks like the back of a building.
Also, if you look at the aerial, there's a very active community-
Right across the street?
Community association, right across the street. They're always, I mean, they have been out lately, but they're always out.
I think they've given up, but, you know.
Yeah, and so, given the scale of the building and, and Dennis and the rest of the board, we, you can tell me how you want this worded, you know, like I said, if you, as I said in here, there doesn't appear to be a front entrance. So that in and of itself creates a blank wall that doesn't address the street or create like a, you know. So that, that was one issue, but it does show the handicap parking and access on the site plan, so maybe there are features that haven't been included. I, you know, we'll have to see.
Have you seen the floor? Where is there off? So there's no office in here at all?
No. No.
So do they have these sliding gates on the road, or do you drive in a little while and then there are-
So, that we don't know, actually. And you raised, we don't know about the-
I would say they, they need to establish some sort of aesthetic presence-
Yes.
For Lee Con Court. Leave it to them, they could work with the ARB, but that, that would be the operative language. Some sort of aesthetic presence.
It is closer to the entrance, right? You know, it's not one of these that is sitting, you know, and-
Right there.
You know, and I, and I do, I said that the front elevation is stark. It, it is, I don't disagree. So I think it does need to be addressed in some capacity. And actually to point out, their facility down the road does address, actually. They have, you know, features, you know, that protrude from the building that sort of address that, so.
Well, maybe we could say, look to your other building and incorporate some of those features.
It's, it sounds like they're just, they're just adding storage and they're not thinking about it as a separate building.
Well, which raises another question. You sort of want to design your, it's a 40,000 square foot building, and what happens if use changes over time? It's very difficult to, it makes it easier if you have the stuff built into the building. So I, I agree with that. Which goes to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The positioning of the gates?
Yeah, and, well, we don't know about the gate. We are at a, you know, pre-submission conference, so it's not fully engineered yet.
So we have a site plan of the entire project where the other building or buildings are?
No, we don't, because you could sort of see on the aerial where they are in relation to, to this property, but we don't.
Would it be good to get, have them submit some photos?
We could do that, add that.
So there are two vacant pieces left on this Lee Con Court, or have they been developed? Seems like.
I don't think they were developed. There might be site plan approval, but-
One has site plan approval.
One does, yeah. One does have site plan approval, yeah.
Which one?
Is Jedi Holding that Claire handled? I think it's a special trade contractor.
Oh, yes, it's a Jedi Holding.
Yeah.
Matter of fact. Which gets to point number five, actually, that you're talking about the building. You could see on the, the site plan, there's parking on the west side of the building, but no parking designated on the east side of the building, but there are, there's entry to that building. So it would seem that you would need to have designated parking if you're going to access that building and utilize the units on that side of the building.
On that side, sure.
You know, so, I think, and I think the, if, if I remember correctly, the special exception criteria, one of them is that you have to provide a 10-foot wide parking aisle associated with the storage unit. So I think they have to address that.
They might have to reduce the size of the building.
No question. I, you know, that's absolutely something. That's why I put the issues in here. They could design it, however, they, you know, could address it, but it may require downsizing the building.
This is no way you can put parking on this side.
They left, you know, there's, there's enough, there's enough travel aisle there for a car to travel through, but that, that's about it.
Yeah, but you don't, and parking the fire lane.
A lot of times, any storage, they don't give parking on one side because you pull up, take your stuff out, you store it, you get in the car and you leave. So, I mean, I, I deal with a storage and that's exactly the way it is. There is no parking on one part where you even, you can use the elevator.
But they have an entrance on that side.
Yeah, they have an entrance and they have an elevator on the one I use.
But if they have an entrance, that means people are going to use it.
Yeah, right, but you, you don't park there. You pull up, you take your stuff off, put it on the elevator, it goes up.
What happens is you're putting it on the elevating, going up to the elevator. Where's your car sitting?
It's just a standing, in other words.
You can't park the fire zone, John.
Yeah, but then you can't move.
Can't stand?
See, that's the issue, John. John, is we have a fire zone on that side of the property and the code says you have to have a 10-foot parking aisle for, you know, access. So, to the building. So they'll, they'll have to address that, I think. But I understand, it's not a high, intense use, you know, but the code, there are certain, you know, but it, but it's used, it is still 40,000 square feet, you know, and a lot of units in there. Number six, I raised a question about outdoor vehicle storage. They don't indicate there's any. They're allowed to, but they would have to show, there's not enough spaces on the property to accommodate it because you can't utilize the required parking spaces for the storage of vehicles. So that's an issue, you know, that they would need to address. The parking calculations appear to be compliant. Eight, the front transition yard, they show they meet the setback. I point to the adjacent property to the east, just because it's an effective screening that they did on the property there. So it's bermed, has a nice landscaping scheme, so they might want to utilize that as part of their transition or at least see how that was done, because I think it came out pretty good. And that was number eight. Number nine, then there's the rear transition yard. As you know, it's board's policy, the, the residential zone runs down the center line of the Long Island Railroad. So the planning board's policy is to give the credit for the 50-foot measured from the center line, which would require then only 17 additional feet on our prop, on this property in account for the 33 feet, you know, from the center line of the railroad. And of course, that'll have to have proper landscaping on a landscaping plan as part of the formal site plan application. Number 10 just deals with the special exception criteria for outdoor lighting. Facilities like this could have some pretty big lighting, you know, for safety reasons, but they, they do have to conform to the requirements of the town code.
The motion sensors, too.
Yeah. Eleven, it's a special exception requirement for signs. It has to comply with the code and they can't have any signage on the security fencing, so that, that's the key there. This is actually an unlisted action pursuant to SEACRA. The, actually, Dennis, you're raising the eyebrow, just made me rethink that a little bit. I want to confirm that, if it's unlisted or type one, as a matter of fact. And I thought when I looked at it that-
It's of a 40,000 square feet?
Because of the 40,000. It doesn't meet the parking. The parking threshold is 50 parking spaces. And I thought when I read, you know, the regulations, that it fit into the unlisted, which doesn't really affect how we review it. It gets reviewed no matter what, but it might be type one. And if it is, I'll, I'll fix it and I'll let you know. I just, you raised your eyebrow and it made me think a little bit.
I think there was a mosquito, but-
That's alright.
Run by.
I'll take that as a sign, however. So I'll just double-check it. Thirteen, it is archaeological, however, in 2004, under the previous site plan, an archaeological report was done and nothing was found. You know, so, so we don't need to do anything more with that. I'm sure the applicant might have some, if you had some information on it, if they can-
I just wanted to know if they-
You have to use a podium-
Can I just, before, what does it mean loading zone in the back? What's that for? That striped area? What do you load back there without the entrance?
I can't tell you for sure. I'm not, I'm not 100% without the engineer here, but I can definitely have an answer for you when we come back. But I saw that myself and I don't think there's an entrance there. I think they're both on the east and west, so I'll, I'll have our engineer address that.
I'll add something to the report that asked a question about the loading zone. What exactly is its purpose and what, for what? I think that's-
In that location, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I missed that.
I just wanted to note, Phil Butler, by the way, Farrell Fritz for the applicant, I just wanted to note for the board that the, the existing facility has two, two-story buildings and then there's a third one-story building. So there are two-story buildings already existing at the main site.
Is that one of these?
That's a-
Yes, correct. Those are the, those are the three there.
The other lot over.
Can you submit just some photos of what they look like?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make some of those changes and I'll let you know about the SEACRA thing, just because it should be accurate.
Motion, second.
By Robin, saying my voice.
What are you motioning?
Seven, seven, seven in favor?
Agenda rolling, will be real quick. I'll motion whatever.
And then I have one more, which is number-
Nineteen, Hampton Cove Realty?
Hampton Cove Realty, we're passing down the, the maps and the aerials. This is on Penny Lane in Hampton Bays, and this is a property that's split-zoned. It's RWB and then I believe R-
All right, explain a little bit, Eddie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
It's an extra map. It's an extra map.
It's a big red line through it.
That's the zoning line.
Is this the report? Did you get one of these?
No.
No report for this.
We have all these papers. Are these yours?
It's mine.
Hey, that's yours.
Yes. Those I do need. Alright. So this is a property on Penny Lane, just south of Shinnecock Road on Penny's Pond. We looked at this for the ZBA referral. They have a CO for the five cottages that you see along the southern portion of the property. One-story cottages, and there's five of them. Then you have a pool to the north, and then another one-story cottage. That one-story cottage was converted to a cottage. It was originally a garage or some accessory structure for storage. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, so to make a sixth cottage on this property would require, you know, an expansion of a non-conforming use from the zoning board. We had sent--
They've already done it.
It's already done. And, you know, so--
That's you, Robin.
So, we had sent, but to so you know, Robin, this might have been before you started. On our referral comments, we had told the zoning board a couple of things. We said, number one, you had a prior ZBA decision on this application. It was to subdivide this property basically down where the zone line is. And at that time, the zoning board said, this was a garage. There was five cottages here. The zoning board said, we'll let you subdivide. You have to take one of these units and get rid of it, and you could use it on this property, acknowledging that five was the maximum you were going to get at any particular point. So, we had pointed this out to the zoning board. We also pointed it out, pointed out that said, look, if you're seriously going to entertain something that you already previously had an issue with in terms of density, then the planning board's going to require that the unit is made affordable, and that we're going to require that the entire site be brought up in terms of septic.
And the septic.
So, now that we're in the process with the zoning board for a SECRE, I said, the planning board's going to take lead agency, and-- which is what we're going to be doing. I've already sat down with the applicant on this, just so you are heads up. All that we're doing today is establishing the board as lead agency, and I've already sat down with the applicant. I mean, this could be, this is going to be a situation that if they're going to get approval, there's going to be a conditional neg deck associated with the conditions attached to it.
What makes it type one?
It's an unlisted action.
Oh, unlisted.
Yeah. Unlisted action, expansions of a non-conforming use, typically.
Is there a CFO for that sixth unit?
There's a CO for it as a garage or, you know, some accessory.
And it's been inspected to make sure that it's safe and the people that are in there are safe by code enforcement?
You know, there's, it is, you know, there's a violation on the property, as far as I know. Whether or not, you know, part of dealing with violations is coming to the boards and everything else. Whether or not it's been properly inspected, they don't have a CO for a house there or for a residence. So, I would seriously doubt that, you know, the inspections have been done.
Someone is living in it? No.
There had been someone living in there, yeah.
Did the ZBA coordinate?
Yeah.
They did, yeah.
The ZBA what?
They coordinated. Because it's optional on this.
Yeah, it is, and I do, I do the SECRE for the zoning board now. When they, when they concerned about coordinating, and generally speaking, something like this, if it's the planning board and zoning board, and I think the planning board should take the SECRE, then I'd recommend to them that they coordinate. And that's what they did here, and so I'm just recommending that we establish the board as lead agency, and then I will come back with, you know, the SECRE documents.
Can I ask a process question? We've come across this a couple of times where there might be a safety issue. We have a property being used as a residential. We have people living in there. It might not have a CFO. It hasn't-- What is our referral to code enforcement, our buildings? Do we do a formal?
Yeah.
I understand it's a violation, but violations can sit, okay? And I've seen violations sit. I don't know how current the violation is. Is the violation from two years ago? Is there someone living in there now? Are they actively renting the set?
So, here's what I know about that from the applicant. My understanding is, yes, it had been utilized, it was, that's why they're before, you know, they got caught with it. My understanding is that there's currently nobody living in there right now. At least, that's what was said to me.
So, code enforcement went inspected?
You know, this is what, you know, was stated to me. The other side of it is, like I said, Robin, and it's good procedurally, what happens is, when someone gets a violation, then town, before they actually get a fine or anything, the town says, go and rectify this. And then, most of the times, they're going before the zoning board and the planning board, and then the question comes, well, what do you do while they're in the process of people living there and everything?
Well, that's my concern.
And I don't know the answer to that question, actually. I just--
Well, Jacqueline, can we get a-- We have to move along with the--
We do, and the goal is compliance. So, we can reach out to code and see what the update is, but, you know, with any of these violations, the code, the goal is always compliance. And so, to the extent that it appears, at least from what Anthony knows, that there's nobody living there, we can get confirmation on that.
Okay.
You know, there is, you know, Justice Court is the tribunal for that, right? And you're the tribunal for the site plan and the special exception. So, while you don't have to operate exclusive of each other, we do have to also respect
each other's roles.
But I think we also have--
I will say, if code identifies an immediate depressing health and safety violation, there's a remedy to seek conjunctive relief, but that goes through the court. That's not us.
It goes through the court. It's just that I think we have a responsibility to the public that if there is people living here, that at least we make the referral or bring note that there could be people living here, and it could be unsafe, and we make sure our code enforcement--
Yeah, and we've certainly done that--
Okay.
--in the past, and we can--
Oh, we can do that again here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, like I said, I'm going to come back with the recommendations on this, but you now are aware of the two big issues. It's going to be the affordable housing component, and then a complete upgrade of the septic with the new IA systems.
They're in that--
Oh, they definitely are in that.
In the days to--
Establish lead agency? Planning board is lead agency?
And refer it to the enforcement. Motion by Robin. Second. All right, Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, seven in favor.
There you go, Anthony.
Good, Anthony, is that the end of you?
The end of me, sounds wrong.
Thank you for all the staples.
The end of Anthony.
Thank you for the staples.
Can you encourage your--
I absolutely can't.
Your fellow-- Staff to make that--
Want it back or in the hole?
While you do it.
You want it, see Anthony has it. Okay, here, you're doing it now.
Matthew's got it.
We're all grabbed. I don't get no respect.
Matthew, where are you going? Gina Webster?
Gina Webster, please.
Number 11?
Yep, I have some handout.
Oh, yeah, this is a big one. I want to put a garbage pail on it.
Resolution, 11 by 17.
And it's stapled.
Stapled now.
And it's stapled.
Paperclip.
It's close enough. I don't have to go near that.
The aerials are on the iPads. I didn't know they weren't working. Printy aerials.
That's all right.
Because everybody has a copy of us.
Eleven. Hi.
All right, the final application for this lot line modification was received on February 11th. It considers action on two parcels within the R20 zoning district of New York--
Matthew, can you just speak up a bit?
Sure, absolutely.
Please, thank you.
The New York State Archaeologically Sensitive Area is located with the WQI medium priority area at 6 and 8 Baycrest Avenue in West Hampton. It's a lot line modification, as I said, to transfer about 1,800 square feet from Lot 2 to Lot 1. The planning board deemed the final application complete on February 28th, and the final hearing was waived with a 30-day written comment period. The planning board referred the application to interested and involved agencies on March 5th. The town engineer did call out a discrepancy in the map. I don't know if their surveyor maybe reversed some numbers, but if you add the first two numbers before the transfer, they're one thing, and if you add the second two numbers, they're a different thing. But the surveyor's been put on notice, and he's going to rectify that.
What's the difference?
About 30 square feet.
30?
Yeah. 20?
12.
12, sorry, 12.
Leaving it simply rounding in--
Yeah.
A parcel street.
Yeah.
Enough for a flagpole.
Yes, and the town engineer also recommended a 3-inch drainage covenant for this. Department of Fire Prevention noted that there was public water in the street and had no further recommendations, and the fire district thinks said the same, and they had no additional recommendations. The conservation board did note that there are several mature trees along the roadway that they were recommending get preserved if possible. In terms of findings, the project was a type-two action. No further environmental review is required. It's within the archaeological sensitive area, as I said, but it was found to be historically disturbed, and a Phase 1 archaeologically, archaeological survey was not required. A pre-application hearing was held on July 13th, 2017, which was followed with a 10-day written comment period. No comments were received, and no comments were received during the 30-day written comment period for the final application. The pre-application report was adopted in, on August 24th, 2017, and that was extended on August 23rd, 2018. The planning board finds that the final map is in agreement with the pre-application report. This project also received variances, because one lot will go from conforming to slightly non-conforming as part of the transfer, but they have all necessary variance to do so. The Suffolk County Department of Health Services issued an exemption for the property. There are currently two parcels of land, and two parcels will exist following the proposed transfers, thereby creating no new lots, and the proposed transfer meets the criteria for review and approval as a transfer of land. And I have some conditions. If you'd like me to go through them?
Anthony, what does it mean by the Health Department gaining an exemption?
Certain projects are not, they don't need to get Health Department approval. They're exempt because of what they are. Lot line modification is one of them.
Okay.
And I can go through the conditions? Everybody's right?
Mm-hmm.
As I said before, to clarify, the discrepancy in lot areas, that's on the survey. And then identify the corrected distance to the nearest means of fire prevention. There's actually a hydrant right across the street rather than 200 feet up the road. And then add a notation that there's covenants and restrictions on the lot. The lot line modification map shall show the resulting configuration of the lots. Submit declarations and covenants for no subdivision of any lots without planning board approval. No lot line modifications without planning board approval on all lots. 3-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces. Submission of three draft deeds with meets and bounds description prior to recording. Execution of the property via three deeds. Submission of deeds filed with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office. Submission of lot line modification to be filed under miscellaneous maps. Town attorney of approval of all legal documents, title certification, mortgage consent if applicable. 10 copies for signature, and submission of all this within 180 days.
Okay. Move it.
Mr. Kelly, you have any questions?
No, okay. So, motion?
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Gloria, second, by Robin. All in favor? Aye opposed. Seven in favor.
Taking you next to number 13 for Sabonic.
Sabonic Golf Club Staff Quarters Addition.
This was a submission for about 1,200 square foot addition to the staff quarters into footprint. Under the PDD at Sabonic, the buildings are allowed to be increased 25% for each building or 25% in aggregate.
Yeah.
This would represent less than a 25% increase. Staff quarters, eight new bedrooms, two bathrooms, a covered porch. There's a recreation room in the basement. As per what they've submitted, there will be an increase in required parking, but they already provide the spaces, and the finishes will be in kind of what's already there. I'm going to put it before the board. If they'd like to review this, you guys would like to review this expedited, we can send it out to--
Can I ask clarification?
Sure.
Is it 25% increase on that individual building?
Or 25%?
Yes, but which is it?
For this, this would be less than a 25% for the building.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it's a small in comparison to what they could--
Correct.
Thank you.
And then after this is done, does it become cumulative or--
That's the question. The easiest way to review it is if we would do 25% on each building. I don't know why the language says both in the PDD, but to review it by building to building would probably be the easiest way. We just have to track it accordingly.
PDD.
MPDD.
Sabonic was a, the golf course was a PDD?
Was a PDD.
Okay.
So, we're not quite sure--
That's how the language reads it. It says 25% increase for each building or 25% in aggregate for all the structures.
So, I think prob, I don't know, but probably what it does is it doesn't allow, if you did 25 for each building, you might be more than 25 overall.
In aggregate, yeah.
So, the aggregate will cap the individual expansions eventually at some point, am I interpreting that correctly?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I have to review the language.
Okay.
It's a math question.
Was this the application where the wetlands, they were moving some wetlands, or this is not that?
No, this is Sabonic Golf Course.
Sabonic.
Oh, it's Atlantic.
Yeah, Atlantic was--
Atlantic.
Atlantic. Yeah, this is the one on--
Yeah, so I have the applicant here also to speak.
We're on Sandy Hollow Road in the back row.
Yeah, you guys would like to--
Very tuckable.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and the rest of the board. Stephen Kiley for Sabonic, the attorney. Also today, we have Ryan Kazner, who's the architect, and we have Troy Albert, the COO of Sabonic. So, if you have any questions.
We're trying to catch up. Give us a second.
Okay.
Do you have a report in here?
No, this is just to consider expedited review if board is comfortable, or if not to deem it complete instead of--
So, what are the, give us the changes that are in store are--
Look--
Okay, okay.
Do you have a--
Okay, we have an existing dormitory--
You have to speak, sorry, into either that microphone--
You can do it here if you'd like--
Or do it on the table.
Because the bike's here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so this is for staff quarters at the golf course. You got it? Everybody has it?
A new building or an extension?
No, no, no. It's an existing building. We're looking, we, as of right, in the SMU PDD, we're allowed to expand it up to 25%. We're expanding 24% of the footprint.
Of this one building?
Correct. It's, see, here's the existing building, and this is going to be addition right here. So, did you want to go into any particulars with it? How many bedrooms and--
Looks like you're putting on four new bedrooms, a new bathroom. Is it another floor? I see stairs.
It's actually, it's two stories.
It's already--
It's two stories, and it's eight bedrooms, for a total of 16 additional occupants.
Okay, if I may, right now in existence, there's 25 bedrooms, okay, that could support 50 staff members. We're proposing eight more rooms, which will accommodate 16 more people. Thus, we would have, be able to house 66 people. 92, we have 92 employees, so, and as you know, it's hard to find affordable housing for people, so we're trying to do everything on-site. And like I said, the PDD allowed for this future expansion as of right. I don't need to go to the zoning board, don't need to look for an amendment of the PDD, anything like that. It allows us to expand the footprint up to 25%. We're at 24%.
What about the septic flow?
We have a application with the Department of Health right now. It's being reviewed. We also have an application pending with wetlands for a letter of non-jurisdiction.
I mean, I just don't see this as an expedited review.
Sure, that's why we're putting it up to the board.
Absolutely, this is site plan review.
But can I, can I just--
Many details in it, please.
I'm sorry. I like to speak to that. So, Section 330, 184D, that's the provisions that govern whether or not a public hearing can be waived. And it says, a public hearing can be dispensed with if, one, there's a lack of public interest in the application, which warrants waiver, and, number two, public hearing will not or minimally aid the decision-making process. Here, I don't think any public input would affect this, because as far as architecturally, we're bound by the requirements in the PDD. So, we're going to stick to the same architectural requirements. You cannot see this structure from the street.
But that's not, that's not the point. I mean, a public hearing, the point is that there are lots of site plan ingredients in the expansion, including septic, including architectural, whatever, and that is what, that is the mandate of this board, and so--
And I totally agree with you on, like, plain vanilla applications, but since this is in a PDD, like I said, we have, we're bound by certain architectural elements that have already been improved.
And this, if I may, this will still be, the decision will still be with the board. It's just on an, in an expedited fashion, so it would only be, it would be referred out to less involved agencies. It would go to the ARB, it would go to the fire marshal, you'd go to the town engineer if you'd like, but you would still be the approving authority.
So, what does it short, I just want to know what I'm losing.
Public hearing.
It's, the only thing I'm losing is a public hearing.
A public hearing, and less referrals.
Less referrals as in who's less?
As, like I said, it would likely, it'd be up to the board who you would like to send it to, but likely, we would recommend it going to the ARB. It could go to the town engineer as there's additional drainage structures, and it could go to the fire marshal's office, because, you know, there's occupancy.
And the Health Department?
Well, that's--
We have to get Health Department--
We have an application there pending already. Matt, have you identified any significant planning issues?
No. No. It's just, like I said, there, it's, it's a, it seems like it was provided for under the PDD that they would be allowed to expand these buildings, so, I mean, they're bound by--
Well, it's not, it's not windows and doors and--
It's up to the board.
Which is what expedited review was initially planned for.
Okay, that's why--
Regardless of whether this is an extension--
It's also a very sensitive environmental area.
It is, and a lot of wetlands.
Can we do something like have a hearing, and then if there's nothing comes up at the hearing, move on to--
Well, we would move it along. I mean--
Yeah, it's totally the board's--
We're going to move it along.
The board's purview.
Need to study if any. The urgency here, though, is that we want to build now the staff housing for the season. And it's already had public hearings. This provision in the PDD, you had a pre-app hearing for the, 2004. So you had a pre-app hearing, and then you had a formal hearing, then you had a planning board examination and recommendation of this PDD, which included this provision of up to 25 percent as of right, expansion. And we are going, as far as environmental concerns, we submitted an application to environmental. They're going to go do a lot inspection and see if they're going to be issuing a letter of non-jurisdiction, because this structure's far enough away from all the wetlands on the property. And like I said, there's no, no one can see it at all, and it's only for the internal use of the staff. And, and again, the urgency is, we're in desperate need right now for the housing.
But how are you going to finish building that, it's already May?
We were assured by a contractor, like, in two months, we could have it built.
Well, I need to make sure.
But I don't, I don't think you need a public hearing, and I don't see the necessity for a public hearing. If, I keep, if anything, the fact that you put eight more people living on the site, you eliminate traffic coming in and going out.
16, 16 people, eight bedrooms.
16, that's even better. So, I mean, it, there is no indication that this is going to affect the wetlands, it's not going to affect the, we'll leave it to Suffolk County Health to determine the septic, but to have a public hearing, what would we gain? I don't see it.
And, and if I may, just, when the PDD was adopted.
In 2004?
Yeah.
So that's 15 years ago?
Correct, but it had town board oversight, planning board oversight, and the public benefit that you get, it's not just someone having a private golf course and that's it, there's no public benefit. There's preservation of open space, out of 298 acres there, 95 acres are preserved, 94 acres are out of play, meaning we can't use it for the golf course, it was restored with native vegetation, 100 acres are in active recreation, open space, and only 3 percent of the property is structural incidental to the golf course. We removed non-conforming structures, we increased wetland setbacks. This is an organic golf course, meaning it's an example for the rest of the country on how to have a viable, organic golf course. It completes a major open space corridor over there. When, when we got the PDD, now it's all open space. And it, because you have Schinacock Hills over there, you have Southampton Golf Course, and we could have built 65 houses, and we did not build that. We removed that from the housing inventory, so there's less taxation on the school district, the fire department. There's, we would add 65 septic system. We also allow five charitable events a year. We permit the use by high school teams, and we enhance this around the property values. So, again, this is a, this is 300 acres, and we're just looking to put this tiny little section onto the building for desperately needed housing, and that's, and otherwise, we wouldn't mind. This is the COO, Troy.
Thank you for giving the time to listen.
Identify your.
Troy Albert, I'm the COO of Sabonic.
Just speak into the mic.
Anyways, so thank you for your time. The reason that they're requesting the rush, we didn't want to spend another $700,000 and build another building on the property, without a doubt. But we have a lot of staff right now, they take the bus from Riverhead, from Flanders, and they have to walk from Shrodland Road, where there's no sidewalk, all the way to our property, almost a mile. Unfortunately, a lot of the neighbors aren't applying for positions that we have, as we have like 100 employees, and you imagine, there's a lot of lower-end positions. We try to take care of the staff. So we wanted to add this additional staff quarters, because the staff are saying, oh, we've got a house we found in Hampton Bays, there's six of us in a room, we're sleeping on the floor, it's no big deal. We don't do that here at Sabonic, we take very good care of our staff, we put one to two people per room, we take great care of everyone. That's why we were trying to do this. We wanted to end it, we wanted to try and rush it, because, yes, if we can have this completed by July, then we would be able to take care of the staff for the summer.
I, I don't know that we need a hearing, but I'd like some site, site.
Well, we have site, Matt, such a procedure.
Yeah, he's trying expedited review.
Yeah, I mean, we have time to look at it.
Okay, again, can we clarify?
Yes.
Go, go checking.
Well, expedited review is really only waiving the public hearing, which saves the 30 days.
That's it.
You still can send out full referrals.
Yeah.
The sooner we send out referrals, the sooner we get comments back, and the sooner you guys can.
That's what I, that's what I.
That's what we want.
Yeah, so if you don't think there's a public interest, you don't need to have the public hearing, we can send referrals out immediately, and you can still get all your information with the standard site plan.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Is it held for comment?
Yes, we set usually a written comment.
So there's a written comment?
So in this resolution, in this resolution, we would set a written comment period.
So what's, what's our action today, we would deem it complete?
I don't see.
You can, you can deem it complete.
But why do we have to call it an expedited review? Can we just say no public hearing?
Well, just really waive the public hearing component.
Yes.
Streamlines it, and then you can act earlier. When you have a public hearing, you can't act without, you know, the set comment period after the public hearing. So you're waiting for the scheduling, you're waiting for it. Now, you should take an action today that would.
Deem it complete is waive the public hearing, 30-day written comment period.
If there's appropriate for expedited review, you want to send full referrals, and waive the public hearing, and then you set a written comment.
I'm fine with that.
We'll see.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's great.
I think we're in the same.
Now, this is for seasonal workers only, H-1 visa, kind of, if, we don't have.
Seasonal workers.
Seasonal workers only. Is it like H-1 visa people?
Exactly.
And you'll have, you have drawings of the interior, the bedrooms? We don't need to look at it, we review it.
Yes, it's all in the packet, yes.
You have in front of you.
It's the same floor up and down, the only thing that changes is that we have a covered porch here, that's it. We need all the egress components for New York State Building Code, and things of that nature. It's really a simple structure.
Do we get any more public benefits now that we're expanding? Can I have another public benefit?
Like, set up a fee for us.
No more.
No, 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 it's, but I'm, so these existing.
This will be overruled.
But the future PD do.
No, can I get another penalty, public benefit?
So this is not personal, you're not that one of us, but.
No, I'm cynical, they're not personal.
Did you turn the cynical off of this?
Yes, I did, I'm fine without a hearing, as long as we have a written.
And who, tell me where you're from again?
Well, my name's Stephen Kiley, I'm a private practitioner, based out of Matacuk.
Perfectly reasonable request.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move it.
Motion, you have all that language?
That would have eliminated a lot of our.
Second fight.
But thank you very much.
All in favor? Opposed, extension seven in favor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not 14. Unlimited Earth Care.
Unlimited Earth, 14.
14?
Yeah.
Not 14, yes.
Bridgehampton.
We're moving east.
What is Earth Care?
Totally moving east.
I have a bunch of information here for you. Report, site plans, an alternative site plan, as well as their ZBA decision.
What number is that?
14.
And of course, it was approved by the ZBA, right?
Yes.
What were they at the ZBA for?
At the other, what, Board of Yes.
You are?
Board of Yes, doesn't matter.
Well, this is where, yeah.
Is this the one on the corner?
Scuttle Hole and.
They have made such a beautiful property, so, what did they have to go to the ZBA for, no? They wanted five parking spaces, I think, or?
Voice for the news. But I'm going to get to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, give me one second.
He's shuffling.
You got to tap up here.
I'm glad they tell us that.
Yeah, it's R-20. So I know that it doesn't matter what it was. This is easy.
It's that bacon field that wraps around. When you drive by, you see it.
Wings.
I mean, they've lost the, I love it, you know, to the south.
Yeah, it was a junkyard.
This is quite lovely, and they cultivated this.
What should we look at first?
So this application's for a 360-square-foot building and a 360-square-foot bluestone patio, with four proposed parking spaces on their site plan, for a landscape design and maintenance use on two parcels, totaling just under 15,000 square feet. This is in the R-20 zone at 1,004 Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike and 2247 Scuttle Hole Road. It's the piece right on the corner. As you, you have the site plan in front of you, a pre-submission conference was held for this in February. No comments were received at the pre-submission conference. I will summarize the concerns that were received in a written comment. They were related to what will be a total of three curb cuts as proposed on the site plan on the unified site, two on Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike, and one on Scuttle Hole Road. Concerned with the functionality of the parking layout, possible inadequate returning radiuses within the parking area, and that the parking does not account for trucks or trailers, which have allegedly been parking on Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike and/or Scuttle Hole Road. The adjacent property was approved as a landscape design office, and there are concerns, it's been, its parking areas are being used for display, also concerns to potential light trespass and excessive signage in residential, but those are potential. In terms of our preliminary review, before that, I just outlined kind of everything that needs to be submitted as part of a standard site plan application. This was, this is an unlisted action, lead agency was relinquished to the ZBA in July of 2017, and a condition-negative declaration was adopted, which stated that no chemicals should be permitted to use on-site, fertilizer-dependent vegetation is limited to 50 percent, have to have a five-foot planted buffer from Scuttle Hole Road with fence along the five-foot setback, and with a six-foot hedge, and additional parkings on the street side of the fence, calls for a six-foot high stockade fence along Scuttle Hole Road to effectively screen the parking, a five-foot planted buffer to the neighbor to the west, a 20-foot planted buffer on the Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike, and a 50-foot setback to Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike for display or outdoor storage. So as, the question was, this was granted variances by the ZBA to change from one non-conforming use to another.
With those requirements?
With those requirements. And, in addition, the variance condition, the merger of the subject property with the adjacent lot prior to the issuance of a CO, which is this lot here, that's where the design business is. If you can see in your packet, there's an alternative site plan that, based on the sketch that I did, that Kyle was able to plot for us, that we feel just works a little bit better for the site in terms of, compared to what the applicant has presented. I'll let the board take a look at it, and I kind of can go through the issues that we had that were addressed, yeah.
Has Mr. Gilmore seen it?
Yes.
What are we looking at?
Alternative site plan, compared to the first one. Just a different, a different layout.
My end was on the writing.
So walk us through this.
Yeah, as you can see on the first one, on what they submitted, there's two curb cuts on Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike. It's recommended the applicant should eliminate the northern curb cut, as it's less than 150 feet from the intersection, which we addressed in the alternative site plan. As you can see, the northernmost curb cuts eliminated, and then we have more.
On which?
On the Turnpike.
On the Turnpike.
Yes. The proposed access onto Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike should be relocated so the travel aisle is adjacent to the existing building on site, with the improved, proposed improvements to be located on the western side, so have the access go through, and then into the parking area, as you can see, which has been relocated to the other lot line, on the western property line.
Does this eliminate the interior circulation?
No.
Kyle's drawing?
It doesn't. You want, I can show you.
Yep.
So the idea is, people will come through here, they can park, there's potential for them to still exit over here if they'd like to, and this way, this is closed, and you could go here and still come out here, and this could potentially be an exit only.
And what about circulation?
It's always straight up, so, I'll see it.
Absolutely.
See, I don't see the other curb cut on this, on this, on this plan. It looks like there's only one cut.
So there's a, so, as part of their ZBA application, these all have to be merged. So there's an existing curb cut just about here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So the importance of when they submit their site plan application, that we need to see all improvements for the unified site.
Yeah.
But yes, there's a curb cut here, and they're proposing an additional curb cut here, and there's an existing curb cut here.
Okay, that's why I'm looking at this, I'm not seeing another second curb cut. So you want to get rid of the curb cut that's up north?
The northern.
Correct, so they can access here and go to the design center, or for more parking here. And it just makes it almost easier to pull into the parking spaces here, rather than pull all the way up and not be able to turn around and then come all the way.
There's a residence on that other side, right?
Correct.
That's where the parking is going to be now, that's what you're suggesting?
Yes, but there's a buffer that was put in place by the, by the, as part of the ZBA determination.
Five-foot planted buffer.
I, I'll be honest, the only problem I'm having is I'm looking, I'm looking at apples and oranges.
No, I know, it's hard to tell without.
If I had here, the full site plan with the one-and-a-half-story frame building on it, then I would be able to compare flow and such.
Absolutely.
But I'm looking here at an empty tax map section, this is what we're looking at.
Which was, which was difficult for us as well.
It's making more.
It was difficult for us to do the review also.
What I would like to see is a map, is a survey that contains this building, you've got it, you've got it.
Do you have it?
This is what we're submitting.
No, no, we see, see, I'm looking at an alternative that has the one-and-a-half-story frame building on it. Right, and I would love to see a full survey here, so I can.
Well, the, the, this board in 2004 adopted a site plan, approved it, and they're COs, and this is existing and functioning.
Right, I know, but he's, he's asked, we're being asked by planning to look at an alternative. And I can't look at the alternative fairly and give you a fair evaluation, because I can't compare the two surveys properly. Are you having the same problem?
Were you aware of that?
Absolutely, that's why we created the alternative that includes the improvements.
But this alternative is just the new piece.
No, that's the unified site. So basically.
That's what I'm saying.
I understand, I understand.
I'm not looking at apples and apples to be able to see if the flow is better.
Yes.
I'm being asked to deserve.
It's like. Sorry, yes. Essentially, it is, yeah, it's this.
Yeah, I, I follow what you're saying, Mr. Gilmore.
So this is a pre-submission conference.
Correct.
So the ZBA has mandated that the sites be merged.
Be merged, yes.
One of the things we're going to ask for is exactly what Robin stated.
Correct, which we asked for in the report.
Revised.
Yeah, so. Revised plans that include all the improvements, so when we're doing our full review, we can see everything very clearly.
Good, it's just before I make a, you know.
Yeah.
Well, it's pre-submission, so he's going to have to submit a revised plan. Kyle took into consideration when he did this, that there are residences where he's put the parked cars.
Yes.
As opposed to cars being parked on Scuttle Hole.
Yeah, because in terms of just the difficulty of coming all the way through the parking lot and pulling into here, than making at least a three-point turn to turn around and come out. Because as proposed on the applicant's site plan, this is not, there's a curb here, so you'd have to exit here, you couldn't go out.
Why can't you go to Scuttle Hole?
You could, that's what's proposed in the alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Can we? Well, David, do you want to say something? You can sit here and speak into the mic.
That'd be great. David Gilmore and Farrell Fritz for the applicant. We've had an opportunity to take a quick look at this, the architect who prepared the site plan hasn't, but this is a pretty big point of discussion, and I think that there isn't a complete understanding on staff's part about the use of this property. So there are two uses, there's a landscape design, and there's a maintenance business. And what, what this plan does is it has those two uses, which are opposite, if you will, uses, compete with each other for entrance and exit, and then parking. You know, the reason that we had this entrance, which is shown over here and coming around, was allow the maintenance business, and the trucks and the trailers and the equipment associated with that, have basically its own access into here, and then park and not compete with the design business, which we can take care of currently on the site that we have parking. With this, with this plan, what's happening is you're having those two uses compete, and I think that that's a problem. The, I talked, I spoke to Kyle last night, and, and I think that there's, there's an opportunity to maybe come up with a creative solution. This was an issue, an issue where it said exit only, part of the maintenance business occurs in the back of this building. So that access has been, you know, primarily for that. You know, we can talk about that, and I don't know if we have an opportunity with the type of equipment and the type of trucks and trailers that we have, to make that an access for maintenance only, and then we can get away from the two uses competing with each other for access to the lot and parking. But, but this, this, this plan does that and has them competing, so I think we have to come up with a, a different type of solution. And, and we're open to doing that, we're open to working with the board, it's a pre-submission conference. The, the problem is, some of the language in this report is just unacceptable to that end. So if you look at paragraph number two.
Variances?
Yeah, so, so the second sentence says, "Variances were issued subject to the provisions of the above condition-negative declaration, as well as no expansion of the landscape design and maintenance business." In my view, I, no.
That's what it's, I, I took that directly from you.
Well, but listen, it's my turn to talk, right? I gave you a chance.
Go ahead.
The, I did not see that in the decision, I'm trying to get a copy of the, of the negative declaration, but the whole point of the ZBA decision was to allow us to have a companion use to what exists currently, which was the landscape design and maintenance. To say you can't increase it, you know, that language can't be that we can't have it here, because that's what the zoning board said we could do. So I think that has to be cleaned up in some sort of way.
We haven't, we just got this.
I understand, yeah, I understand, and I, and I've had a chance to work with it, and Matt has been great, and so, so was Kyle, I just, you know. Number three says, "Two curb cuts will not be permitted on Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike." I think, well, and then the, the second line says, "The applicant shall eliminate the northern curb cut on Sack Harbor, Bridgehampton-Sack Harbor Turnpike." I understand that we want a lessen curb cuts, that's what our comp plan says, but we also have to accommodate the use on the lot. So I think we need a more, a more broad sentence here that says that the applicant will work with the planning board on providing proper access, acknowledging the requirements of the comp plan, something along those lines, which this will-not and shall language, you know.
But because the entrance now seems to function fine, it goes into the main building, the design building.
The concern, the concern, if, if, if I might speak for staff, I spoke to Kyle, is that under our plan, we had a, an entrance here, an entrance here.
The existing one.
Right, and then Scuttle Hole Road, which was, you know, three turns and 200 feet. So I understand the concern. Right, I understand that that ultimately may be the issue, but I don't want to preclude a creative solution to this, and I think we can put people together, and I, this language is preclusive. And I, this language is preclusive language, will not and shall. And I just, it needs to be broader so that I don't come back here after the site plan and, and we have somebody who objects not to the overall problem, but to, to certain things, and they hold that, they hold this report against us during that process. I think that the language has to be broader. And then if you look at, if you look at paragraph four, "The proposed access on Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike shall be relocated to where," and I, and I just, you know, this, this doesn't work. There may be a creative solution. I hope that there is. But, but this doesn't work with the two uses competing. We're creating, creating a problem. And, and what, what it really is, is the design is going to be done out of this building. Maintenance is going to be, you know, back here. Here is where we're going to have examples of the different types of plants, trees, that you can get. It's not retail, but, but we're going to have people coming out of the design shop walking across the traffic, which it's, it's why this ended up here.
Yep.
Right? And so it was, this.
It's better circulation.
It was well thought out this way, and, and, you know, it, it could be that we maintain this and get rid of this. We just need to be able to access the parking. Maybe that can be done here. I don't know. But there are answers that are possible out there. But that language, I think, is, is something that we're going to have.
So it really shouldn't be shallow, which could be considered.
Consider. That's fine. I, I just want to clarify that in the ZVA decision that I have printed, there being no, it's number five, six, seven, there being no further expans, expansion of the landscape design and maintenance business.
Where is, what page are you?
Where's that?
It's in your ZVA decision.
But where?
It's towards the, it's in the bottom, I would say, quarter.
It says VIi there.
It's on the front page.
There be no further expansion. There be no further expansion.
I mean, and, and part of the reason that we gave the alternative, because as part of that decision, it's a unified site. We want it to function as a unified site.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. We're, we're missing half our site plan.
Correct.
So.
Which was even.
It's probably, it's probably going to be beneficial to, to hold this over maybe and adopt the report in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I'll let David take a look at it.
So we can develop a report more that basically states that, and we would need an extension for that.
I mean, it sounds like there, there was one business. They're adding a second.
Yeah.
And the ZVA is saying, yes, you can have the second, but the first can't grow because there's not, you can't put that many apples in this bag. That's kind of the way I'm reading it. I may not be correct.
That's fair, so long as we have the expansion on the second lot.
We're not going to get the revisions you're seeking at this, you know, here.
Right now.
We'd have to, the, the report needs to be revised.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But, but I want to explain where we're coming from. I come in peace, but we, we have some real issues.
It would be easier for us too if we can see the whole thing.
And if you can amend the map this survey so that the first lot is completely defined, I think it would go far.
Yeah, it would be easier, easier for us as well to review, yeah.
Yeah. So, will you give us an extension?
Give us a, two weeks.
Two weeks, extension?
We'll get it done.
Okay.
I mean, this, this is pre-submissions, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But we still need to see half, you know, half the site.
I mean, that could be part of the application, is that we put it on.
But we're trying to develop a report to tell you to.
To give recommendations.
And I'm not comfortable with the report.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion, Dennis.
For a 14-day extension.
For a 14-day extension until?
May, it'll be the eighth or ninth? No, four, yeah.
14 days.
May ninth.
The doctor.
All right, all in favor, a motion by Dennis.
I said second.
Gloria in second, and all in favor.
Thank you.
Opposed, extension seven in favor.
I'm actually going to skip to 18 because I have some very patient applicants. Thanks.
What's this for?
Head of ponds, eight-foot head of ponds.
It's a fence. And we're still in Bridgehampton.
Where's my pants?
Your what?
What number are you going? 15?
18.
18. What happened to the 16?
But we still have Jackie to go, so.
You want to go back? Make sure he goes back to.
I understand, it's a sense of urgency. Uh, this is for an, this is for a deer fence for the purpose of deer exclusion on a, what is a residential building lot that will be used as, to grow nursery stock.
I didn't realize it was a residential building lot.
Yeah.
The stuff today.
Yeah.
Is it an agricultural production?
They, I have included in your packet, they have a, they have ordered all of their materials. It's been farmed in the past. This is going to be a new farm use, but they do have quite a substantial amount of nursery stock that they've ordered. They've gave samples of fencing. The applicant is here so they can specify further exactly what they're going to do there. The only thing that I do call out in compared to what the plan that was submitted, that we, the, as part of the subdivision, this lot was required to have a common driveway with the lot that's adjacent to it. So they wouldn't be able to, I, I would believe this common driveway agreement would bind them to access even for the ag use off of the common driveway.
And the other, of the lot is residential?
Residential.
It looks like the driveway's on both lots.
Correct. From the, yeah, what was built by the, the other homeowner.
And how do the neighbors feel about this?
Agricultural's are permitted use in the residential zone.
Is this the Corwith piece?
No.
This is different, right?
It's in the map, it's in Remu, it's Remu Wasnawski. It is on.
I think one of the adjacent.
Eight forty-eight head of pond.
I think one of the adjacent properties is the person who's actually going to be farming it, correct?
Yes.
So they can walk to work.
Yeah. You guys want to come up if the board has any questions?
It's the young man, actually.
How cool.
If the board has any questions for me, you can kind of specify what he's doing there. John, if you want to come up.
Now that I see the blank lane, I know exactly where it is.
Across the street from Corwith.
Yes.
Yes.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is John Venesina.
Welcome.
If you have any questions.
What are you going to grow?
I was going to do some, maybe privet and green giants or Leyland cycypuses.
Come in here wearing a St. John's basketball shirt. You don't know how that hurts.
And so this, so this is ready to go in the ground? Is this?
Well, yeah, I've, I've ordered some of the plants and I'm ready to plant them there. But there's like a lot of deer in the area, so like if I plant them and there's no fence, then a lot of.
You have an objection?
Yeah, that's for sure. And how do you get into this parcel? Do you have a, a road that goes to the house?
There's a road that comes back from the farm that could lead to the property.
Yeah, it comes along the top, see it?
Along the back.
Oh, I see it's there, yeah.
There's a road, you can see, it's lighter. It's like a tanish.
Off of head of ponds?
No, it's.
I mean, so I think we can, we could probably approve the deer fence, but it has to be, it has to be a timeline for production, I think, for the plants to be in.
Yeah, I mean, it's really at the board's discretion. I mean, staff feels that the applicant has demonstrated that they do have the intent to farm. As you can see, I believe I included the receipts of what, you know, a substantial amount of agricultural.
And they're in the back.
Ordered.
And the entrance to the parcel is?
Uh, it would be, it would be off the common drive because there's a common driveway easement between this property and the next one.
So would the filing of a built resident, building permit for residential structure trigger the removal of the deer fence, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
How would we, would that be a covenant filed?
We could covenant or?
It's a condition.
Yeah. Because this is a site plan essentially.
Building, building would pick that up because they get a building permit.
Yeah, but they get a copy of the resolution goes with the.
Correct.
They would get a copy of this.
The building department.
Yeah.
But we do make it a condition.
You know you can't be heard.
He's not supposed to be.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Did we say that, was it eight-foot fence? Is that?
Deer fence, yeah.
Yeah, eight fence.
Yeah, and all the conditions that go with it.
Standard, the standard conditions, and if the agricultural use ceases, the deer fence has to be removed.
Has to be removed, right.
And we can actually, Dennis, we can add the, if you'd like, the condition that should they file for a residential building.
They've got a lot of money invested in here. He's got like twenty-three thousand.
Right, add that. That would be good. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second. Second by Phil, all in favor. Opposed, extension seven in favor.
He's got to have some wood outside.
One more, number 16, a site disturbance, six twenty-eighth Pleasure Drive. I have a full size I can show you, or if you have one hand, else you're going to have them.
Big picture, please.
Big picture, John.
Thank you for coming out.
Good luck.
Yeah, John left college today to drive out to come speak to the board.
So where are you now, sixteen?
Number sixteen, six twenty-eighth Pleasure Drive. This is a flag lot.
This is a lot.
Eighty-eight thousand square feet. Absent the flag, it's about eighty-one thousand square feet within the CR 200 zone.
Wait a second.
Wait a second. We're having a private conference.
What?
It's a bifurcated meeting.
It's all yours, Matthew.
Thank you. Uh, the property's limited to 35% clearing. The homeowner, in the process of clearing his lot to build his new house, went beyond. It's not 100% cleared. He's overcleared by about 16.7%. We actually, we got a revised plan last week, which is much better than the first plan.
Sorry.
Do you visit the site?
I have not visited the site. All appropriate for the natural community that is within. It's mostly pitch pines and oak trees, both high bush and low bush, very, along the perimeter. Initially, they're proposing to put the house more forward and do an additional clearing of established mature trees. So we actually recommend as it, if you shift it back, you'll actually have to do less revegetation. And this will count in terms of your natural area.
And they're doing that.
And they're doing that.
That's good.
So do they look like silly ornamental, where they're going in, or will it be?
No, this will be natural. It's, I mean, it's all dictated, asked for their approval, that it's got to be naturally spaced, no mulch, leaf litter. They're spaced.
And you'll check it, right?
Absolutely. Subject to final inspection.
Okay, any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Phil, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, six in favor, one absent.
That's it for me.
You're done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jackie.
Jackie, we had you at the beginning and at the end.
Number two, are you going to start from the top?
Uh, yes, just go in order. If you do not have apples here. So number two is Rothman Dynasty. This is a two-lot subdivision which we just received on April 2nd. Uh, it does contain freshwater wetlands, which are to the north, and an existing house. They are proposing a two-lot subdivision. Lot one contains 80,000 square feet and lot two contains 81, 524 square feet and proposes 189 and 133 square foot open space parcel. This is the wetland line, right here. They're also showing, I believe, which is an existing conservation easement, but I'll review that with Kathleen, and then a proposed buffer. The only issue that I do want to bring up to the board is they are asking for some relief in our buffer, which is pursuant to chapter 325. You are allowed a 75-foot buffer from wetlands when your existing developed property, although right here, they're not showing a 75-foot buffer. So we were kind of looking at this, and because this area is also close to the wetlands, they do have the existing house, they do have an existing yard, so we might be able to look at, you know, what would be 75 feet to here, but allow them to keep the historic clearing, but maybe make up for it in this area, which would kind of just level off that buffer there. So something to look at, but this is a very large area of wet, DEC freshwater wetlands. It's beautiful over there. This house is existing, and so we're just looking at two lots right there.
What's proposed, oh, the open space are going to dedicate?
The open space actually starts right here on the wetlands line, which is a little interesting in design, and then it goes up.
Topography is hilly here, or?
Um, it kind of gently slopes up and then down. Yeah, so there's like a little bit of a rise to the house and after the house, it kind of slopes. But this would just be, I recommend that it be deemed complete and schedule a hearing to review.
For, May?
May 23rd, I think.
So is that the 20? That's the fourth or fifth?
Fifth.
Fifth. Motion by Phil, second by Robin, all in favor.
Aye.
Seven yes?
Yes.
Sixteen?
Uh, next I have Nemec Property.
Number 15.
You, actually, I have little handouts for you. I just received this last week, although I'm very familiar with the property, and you are too, because we just did the covenant amendment where we reduced this from 50 feet to 30 feet on the road. So I have the resolution here for you, and I have the aerials just to jog your memory to the purpose. Take one and pass. But I received, um, they actually submitted a revegetation plan to me, and I actually went out there on April 16th. Um, April 18th, they got me a revegetation plan based upon my requests and recommendations on site when we met on site. I asked for a couple tweaks. They actually just got me the plan yesterday, so I'm very comfortable with it, but it will be subject to me doing a final inspection because they're starting installing the plants this week and next week. So they do have 50% clearing, so they're showing compliance with that based upon the survey prepared by Marty Hand. And then they also have a revegetation plan that I just received showing the requirements. So essentially, they did clear and it has passively revegetated, but I did ask for some overstory trees, some pitch pines, cedars and oaks to basically reforest the property. But otherwise, it is kind of coming back passively already as well.
Yeah, I mean, this, this area looks pretty barren.
Yes, and so since then, I mean, that was spring of 2018. So essentially, once they finished the house, they, you know, they knew, we were actually working on a site disturbance plan earlier on in like 2013 and 14. earlier on in like 2013 and 14. We just kind of like abandoned that plan because we amended the buffer, so they've essentially resubmitted and the plan they have now, and they, I just asked for some additional density, but the 30-foot buffer is really actually in pretty good shape, and I just asked for some additional trees in there, and then they're going to pay more attention to kind of that, I guess it would be like that northeastern area. But I do recommend approval based upon what's submitted and just subject to a final inspection by the planning division staff.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor? Another overclearing.
Yes. This is vintage vines. So vintage vines, this is for 32 Barn Lane, act number 951-271.6. This is actually lot five on the subdivision, so this is 26,788 square feet. They are entitled to 60% clearing, and it was overcleared by 19%, so they had actually overcleared it almost 80%. I met with them also on the same date, on April 16th, and they submitted an updated survey to me yesterday as well. Essentially, they just have to do a little bit more revegetation. Some of the revegetation along the gate was not appropriate, so they kind of had a row of arborvitae's and then like one, like edge planting, and I was like, that's not revegetation. But they're actually going to revegetate in the front, and actually, the back is actually, where they didn't touch, there's like a, almost like, you know, like a nice area in the back, which is native, but they did, they're basically doing some perimeter plantings, and I'll, I'll make this subject to, and a final inspection too, because when I went there, they weren't planning, but they're planning to revegetate sometimes this week or next week, so. But I do recommend approval, subject to final inspection by the planning staff.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor?
I'm, I'm taking over the cynic. It moved my way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, because this developer has done this on every single property. And I, I may not be right, but, but how many, I'm not here that long, and there's been quite a few.
I believe it might be every single lot.
Every lot was overcleared.
And as a man, we talked to them about it.
I don't know if you've seen every lot, but I believe.
Well, I, me personally haven't, because I haven't been around long enough on this board, but I find it outrageous.
The houses are too big for the lots. That's the problem.
How many more lots are left?
Um, I'll, I can double check, but I know they're actually almost completely finished. I do have to say, even though they have pushed the envelope, they do a very nice job revegetating. So, I mean, it's not like you're getting in like little bits and pieces here and there. They do, they understand what is necessary, and they meet our like density requirements and tree spacing requirements. A lot of other people, you know, are really sparse and try to get away with not doing the density that we recommend. We're always like, yeah, get in more plants.
Well, that's because they, they're so good at it because they've been doing it so much.
They've mastered the art of the violation.
You know, edit, you see, it's a clear cut.
The violation art.
You know?
Um, and they are, I'm, I'm not sticking up for them at all, but they are cognizant of trying to keep the larger trees, though, onsite. So even if they do have to go in, unfortunately, what's getting really disturbed is the understory, the native blueberry, high bush, blueberries, sedge, et cetera. That's what's really being damaged in the front of the lots because they're small lots, they're large houses, and they're gumming in from the front for construction access. They're doing a good job of keeping the native vegetation generally in the rear of the lots, but the sides in the front is what they end up revegetating because of the tightness of the site.
And they're, they're meeting the setback requirements even though they're building big houses.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any variances on them, but they're maxing out the building envelope.
Yeah.
And when you max out a building envelope with a pool, and you have to put the sanitary system in the front yard, as well as the driveway, it's tight.
Yeah. Okay, so we took a vote, right?
Yep.
Anything else, Jackie?
I just had a line.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, is that it?
Yep.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Robin.
See, that's six.